Good evening, everyone. Let's call this meeting to order. Happy New Year. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're going to begin tonight with a public hearing on proposed ordinance, Section 157, water shortages. The ordinance would give the Board of Selectmen the ability to take steps to limit certain uses of water in cases of a water shortage where voluntary conservation measures aren't enough. Anyone who wishes to speak, I'll ask them to keep their remarks to five minutes. If additional time is needed, they could speak after everyone has already spoken. And I'll also remind you, when you call up to speak, to sign in, just so we can make sure to get your name right for the minutes. Would anyone like to speak on this ordinance, proposed ordinance, tonight? Yes?
Do you require legible handwriting here?
Suggested, not required.
Donald Rieger, 9 Stodmore Road. I'm the Secretary of the Conservation Commission. It was that commission that originally proposed this ordinance to the Board of Selectmen. The ordinance was as submitted, has been modified somewhat by a subcommittee of the Board to assure that voluntary conservation was considered first primarily. At a meeting in December, the Conservation Commission unanimously reaffirmed its endorsement of the ordinance as modified. The reason for the town ordinance can be found in the Connecticut Drought Preparedness and Response Plan. It says, quote, "The state can enforce water use restrictions only when the drought is at the emergency stage. Therefore municipal authority is necessary to enforce local drought measures at earlier stages." Why might we need restrictions? In one Connecticut town, it was found that lawn watering in season increases the average daily water consumption by about 50 percent. And it can increase as high as 160 percent in hot, dry weather. Water companies can request that their customers limit watering, but they have no enforcement power, particularly not as to private wells. The Connecticut Drought Preparedness Response Plan notes that legislative legislation passed in 2014 encourages municipalities to use, to adopt a water use restriction ordinance. Parenthetically, Representative Hampton sponsored that legislation. In municipalities that have private wells, the ordinance should also include, the plan says, homeowner responsibility. Simsbury is entirely a groundwater system. Even our water company water is all well water. If one has a private well, it's natural to think of the water as coming from under one's own land. But, in fact, the water comes from a shared aquifer, and one's own use of a well will affect one's neighbors. The town needs a toolkit to deal with water shortage before it becomes an emergency. The proposed ordinance does not require the Board of Selectmen to do anything. It merely gives it a pre-approved menu of items that it can pick and choose among to respond to conditions as they develop. The draft ordinance is patterned after one that has been in use in Greenwich for a few years. That town had a very serious water shortage problem in the last drought, and the ordinance worked very well for them. Finally, if I may, I would note one typo. On page two, Section 157, two, sub three, in the third line, the phrase "deem appropriate" comma should be inserted between shall and determine, with an S added to determine. So it should read, "And other persons the Board shall deem appropriate comma determines." You'll see that this language is parallel to that in the third line of 157, two, sub seven. It's just a mere typo. So that's the pitch. I'd be pleased to answer any questions if you wish to pose some.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I do, actually. Don, can you state again where that typo is?
Yes, look on the second page, Chris.
Number seven.
That sub-paragraph three, that's 157, two, A, three. Threatened water shortage.
Yes, threatened water shortage, okay.
In the second line, I'm sorry, in the third line. Farmington Valley Health District, comma, "And other persons the Board shall," insert "deem appropriate" comma, "determines."
That's what our copy says. That's why I'm...
No, it doesn't.
Isn't it? The Board shall deem appropriate, comma...
No, it's number three.
Oh, I'm on the wrong section. I'm sorry.
So you're looking at sub-seven, which is the correct...
Seven, yes, I am. Excuse me.
So deem appropriate, comma, shall determine, yeah, okay.
By keeping the language parallel with the other sections.
Yep, okay. Thank you, Don.
You're welcome. Thank you for that. Would anyone else like to speak on this? Let's go.
Joan Coe, 26 Whitcomb Drive. First of all, I was told that Simsbury has an abundant supply of water. And as we were told, that there are some towns that have surface water that they're using. And so the conditions of drought would be different from one town to another. And my question is, if Simsbury has all this water, could we get a waiver if somebody says that we have, the state decides we're going to have a, an ordinance to monitor the water usage because of a shortage? Is the town able to get a waiver saying, "We don't have a problem"? And the problem I have with all these rules and regulations, the fact that you have neighbor going against neighbor, and the first thing they do is pick up the phone, "My neighbor is using too much water." And I don't think we want to go and go down that line. And this is the question that we always have, on who's using too much? How do you regulate it? I think you have an ordinance that you can't really regulate, other than people calling in and saying, "My neighbor is doing whatever, washing the car, doing this." By the time you get there, it's over. And you're going to go running around trying to chase people. So I think it's important to save water. I think we're all good citizens, and we do want to take care of our natural resources. But when you put something like this in, I think it's overkill, especially for the town of Simsbury, where we do have a big water supply. And I just think that monitoring any of these preconditions is almost impossible. So we're asking the public to do something which I don't think is part of their purview. And the only way you'd find out is with people calling up and saying, "This is the problem." So you could say, "You're not supposed to water." But who's going to look to see if I'm watering or not, other than my neighbor? So I'm concerned about this kind of activity. I think we ought to look into getting waivers and say, "We don't want to be part of this because we have plenty of water. We're not sharing it with anyone but the town of Simsbury, and maybe Avon or Bramby, if we have some of them." But if we have enough, we shouldn't impose restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Would anyone else like to speak on the proposed ordinance? Yes, please.
I'm John Schaefer, 16 Lossbrook Road. In general, I support this amendment to add Section 157, water shortage, shortages. But I have concerns that the prohibited acts enumerated in Section 157, 5A, are unfair and could do more, could do more to encourage conservation of water. For instance, 157, 5A prohibits watering of plants unless, quote, "necessary to sustain food crops, crops for harvest, or stocks of business inventory," end quote. So if a water shortage is declared, a business can continue using water, as they did before, even if their method wastes a significant amount of water, while a resident who just had $10,000 or whatever of worth of plants installed must stand by and watch them be damaged or die, even if the resident had had a very efficient drip irrigation system installed. I realize that Section 157, 7 allows for the homeowner to apply for a waiver. This process may take too long. By the time the resident realizes that the drought will be prolonged, finds out that a waiver is possible, figures out how to apply, waits for the next Board of Selectmen meeting, and then waits for the process to be completed, the plants may be too severely damaged. In the meantime, the businesses accepted in Section 157, 5A may have wasted more than enough water to have saved the residents' plants. These prohibited acts in Section 157, 5A should be written in a way that is not just prohibitive, but rather a way that encourages water conservation for everyone. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this?
Thanks, Joe. Thank you, Joan. Thank you for comments.
I was just trying to write down your comments.
Hi, I'm Brian O'Donnell, 10 Lewis Street in Tarahiffle. I'm commenting as a member of the Tarahiffle Water Commission. We applaud the town's efforts to anticipate and prevent problems, but we don't know if this ordinance is the right way to go about it. The Tarahiffle Water Commission does, and can and does, monitor the aquifer that we draw from, and we already have the power to limit the use of water if conditions necessitate. The town and the Water Commission appear to have overlapping jurisdictions to address this problem. The town is generally authorized by statute to, I'll quote it, "provide for the furnishing of water by contract or otherwise." The Water Commission was established pursuant to a statute that, in its current language, authorizes the creation of special districts specifically, quote, "to plan, layout, acquire, construct, maintain, operate, and regulate the use of a community water system." But we consider that the Tarahiffle Water Commission is the appropriate entity in Tarahiffle to regulate the use of the water that it provides to residents of the district. Every year, the Water Commission explains in writing to the Department of Public Health what water conservation practices we follow, including educating our residents by mail and by our website. The Water Commission is governed by rules and regulations, and Paragraph nine of those rules and regulations lists the permissible reasons for the denial of service to residents of the district. Paragraph nine, A, three, authorizes the termination of service to any person who has diverted the water for unauthorized use. And Paragraph nine, A, four, authorizes the termination of service if the furnishing of water would be in contravention, contravention of any orders, ordinances, or laws of the federal government, the state of Connecticut, or any political subdivision thereof, which would include us as the Water Commission, as is the town. In short, a person who uses water in contravention of a conservation order by the Tarahiffle Water Commission risks having their water shut off. The draft ordinance is problematic to us for three reasons. First, it would provide two entities, the town and the Water Commission, with authority to address the same problem, leading to the potential that the town will be working at cross purposes with the Water Commission. If there's a shortage of water in the aquifer drawn by the Tarahiffle Water Commission, the Water Commission is responsible to detect it and act on it. And we would rather not have the Water Commission and the residents of the district bound to follow rules designed to address water conditions generally in Simsbury or generally in the state. We're looking at our own aquifer. Second, the draft ordinance does not obligate the selectmen to even consult with the Water Commission before declaring a state of groundwater depletion. The language in that section uses the word "may." You may consult with the water companies, but you may not. The draft ordinance does require the selectmen to consult, or the town, to consult with the Water Commission before declaring a water shortage or a threatened water shortage, but not a groundwater, a state of groundwater depletion. Finally, the ordinance authorizes a fine up to $50 a day for violators. The Water Commission thinks that it can control a problem if one arises by telling people their water will be shut off if they don't obey conservation orders such as, you know, limiting watering of lawns, washing of cars, the things that we have seen on occasion in the past. So the Water Commission would like to work with the town to address the possibility of drought. We'd be happy to be in close communication with town officials during droughts and during the preparation of an ordinance if one is ultimately adopted. We'd be happy to be in close communication with the town to address the types of issues that I've just raised. But until that happens, we would ask that Tarahiffle be deleted from the ordinance.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this proposal? Okay. In that case, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Come here.
Second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and the motion passes unanimously. So now we move to the public audience portion of the meeting. Again, we ask speakers to limit their comments to five minutes. I'm always happy to stay after this meeting or meet any other time by appointment if five minutes isn't enough time. Anybody who would like to speak tonight in public audience? Joan.
Joan Coe, 26 Whitcomb Drive. I am concerned about the attitude of Jamie Rabbit, who has told me in the past that he has a judge that he can call upon to defend him. Jamie Rabbit has also told me that he must, that I must make an appointment to ask him a question of his staff because questions are distractions from his work. Recently, I was in the planning department area to wish the staff a Merry Christmas. Immediately, Jamie Rabbit, with the developer in his office, blurted out about having a, an appointment. Recently, I was having a conversation with the computer manager about placing access points on buildings for more Wi-Fi viability, when Jamie Rabbit waved his arms from his office for the computer manager to stop the conversation with me. It appears that Jamie Rabbit has not only become unhinged, but appears anxious about anyone questioning the planning staff. After researching his background and activities, I found that Jamie Rabbit is also on the staff of Pomfret, Sterling, and Lisbon. Pomfret's website has Jamie Rabbit as town manager. The minutes of the November 21, 2017, meeting of the Sterling Planning and Zoning Commission notes Jamie Rabbit as staff. Lisbon has acknowledged Jamie Rabbit as former town planner on the plan of development and conservation 2016. It seems unconceivable that anyone can have four full-time jobs without using Simsbury's town staff, computer, printer, phone, email, and other resources while working for Simsbury with a salary of over $115,000. All my allegations regarding Jamie Rabbit should be investigated by staff. I have asked town staff to research whether Jamie Rabbit has a contract with the town that allows him outside employment and the stipulations for his outside employment, and allow me to review the file. I'm very concerned that the town has created a toxic environment within the town. There are few residents who establish a, quote, "special status" by volunteering for many boards and commissions, giving them the ability to bully residents. On Thursday, December 21, 2017, Nick Mason, a special status person, interrupted my conversation with a Simsbury police officer in the town hall parking lot that was taped, to ask the officer to arrest me, not once, but twice. Along with all Nick Mason's associations, he is on the Board of Directors of the Simsbury Bank. It appears to me that Nick Mason is a bully and should not represent the Simsbury Bank. I'm asking the Simsbury Bank, I'm asking that the Simsbury Bank, the Simsbury Bank has not updated their website, saying that, quote, "He serves as an elected member of the Town of Simsbury Board of Finance." He does not. Another special interest person is Dave Moore. He's Vice President of the Democratic Party. He stated in a meeting that he was going to contribute $1,000 to the party and $100 to each candidate. Reviewing Eric Wellman's campaign finance report, Dave Moore contributed $20 to Wellman's campaign, the lowest amount of any contribution. Dave Moore, Chairman of the Board of Ethics, where I filed a complaint... Where I filed, Dave Moore, Chairman of the Board of Ethics, where I filed a complaint that Mark Scully did not report on his ethics for his solar company while serving on the Clean Energy Task Force. My complaint also included the fact that Dave Ryan, President of the S-PAC, did not notice on his conflict of interest form. Both, here's the other one. Both, both signed forms do not note any exceptions which appear to be a violation of the Code of Ethics which I submitted. The Board of Ethics dismissed my complaint, quote, "For lack of detailed evidence in any section of the Code of Ethics that had been violated," end quote. The submission of the ethics form, the Charter, of the charters, 1103, and states violations by any such official Board or Commission member or employee of the provisions of this section shall be grounds for removal," end quote. This appears to be self-explanatory. It appears that the Board of Ethics is unethical. Tom Cook, Past Director of Administrative Services, retired and was rehired part-time basis. Tom Cook was given a severance package of $58,654. I have never heard of any actual public employee getting a severance package. Tom Roy, Public Works Director, has purchased a truck for his work and personal use for $18,178. The purchase went through the normal bidding process. Mitchell Selig Ford was not the low bidder. Steve Mitchell has come before the town touting his special status with the town and his lifelong commitment to the town. However, when it comes to getting a low bid on town cars, he does not deliver. Maybe, as my bumper sticker states, quote, "Boycott Mitchell Car Dealership," end quote. I would like to report that Eno Farms Housing will not be sold and will remain under the control of CHFA and Conover Management. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, News Feed on Facebook, and Simsbury Forum topics. I hope I was in my five minutes, and thank you for listening, and I hope you follow up on my allegations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joan. Who else would like to speak in public audience tonight?
I'm Joe Tracy, 40 Berkshire Way. I'm here to talk about the Deepwater Wind Project. As you all know, the Todek Siting Council has approved the siting of this industrial-sized or utility-sized solar farm within Simsbury. I strongly recommend that you take up an appeal on the many issues that they did not adequately address for the residents of Simsbury. Starting off with the fact that they were very rude and dismissive, not only to Lisa, but to our experts and to the town staff that spoke at the meeting, a number of meetings. Although experts may disagree on the impact of the water contamination issue, having them say it is unlikely that it will affect our aquifer, which is adjacent to the property, does not give me great comfort. We can't allow Deepwater to proceed to their development and management plan to address the following issues. Number one being water testing and public safety. They have agreed to do testing of the aquifer and the properties on Knollwood, Centerwood, and Howard. However, it was begrudgingly done because we kept badgering them about doing it in the first place. The second issue is the buffering plan. The Siting Council states that the town plan would be a financial burden to Deepwater Wind. Please give me a break there. They're backed by a New York hedge fund. The amount of money that they're going to spend on their plastic vinyl fence along Hoskins and County would offset a portion of that, in addition to the fact that they're moving 30,000 or 40,000 square feet of dirt in the project that could easily be used for some degree of a berm, of a buffer, with trees and plantings in it. Next is their decommissioning plan is woefully inadequate. I spoke about it the last time I was here in December. Using it to salvage value and funding their bond over 10 years is not, is not appropriate. They need to post the bond at the very beginning, and it's going to stand for 25 years. The other issue is that Deepwater Wind has no experience building solar farms. It's a, in the grand scheme of things, it's a small company with maybe 10 to 20 employees. All work, all management of the farm will be by subcontractors. They're located in Rhode Island. We're here in Connecticut. And lastly, or not lastly, but in a recent article in the Hartford Current, Jeff Grabowski said that they were building farms in Foster and Gloucester, Rhode Island, or Massachusetts, Rhode Island. My wife spoke to town officials in both towns today, and those proposals have not been worked on at all. Lastly, is there a public need here in Connecticut? Obviously not, if all of the power, every kilowatt of it, or megawatt of it, is going to Massachusetts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm here to talk about the solar project that was also recently approved. A little background, I actually created a Facebook group called Simsbury Solar, which has almost 1,300 users on it. So there's a lot of information, and this was something I essentially posted today where there's kind of continued, continuous conversation about the project. And now that it's approved, I'm sure there will be more on there as well. So essentially, I wanted to address the Board of Selectmen to kind of implore them to consider an option to appeal the CSC ruling for a number of different reasons, what Joe actually just said before as well. One of them is the town should not rely on the DNM plan or the design and management phase to hope that our concerns with the installation will be addressed. One perfect example is the Sprogue solar farm construction issue last month that's underway. That's an almost exact size project as this one, 20-plus megawatt plan. A couple of months into the construction, DEEP had to issue an order to halt the project because of groundwater issues and stormwater issues, flooding basements, and so on. So that's just a sign of things to potentially come here in our own backyards. Public safety, which is really at the top of the list, was not satisfactorily addressed in the CSC ruling. They made a judgment call, the Siting Council made a judgment call, and sided with Deepwater, a Deepwater expert who said it's unlikely that there will be any groundwater contamination. It's not really a strong word that helps me sleep at night with my family here in Simsbury, that a state agency is siding with a petitioner's expert and not siding with a paid expert that this board and this town actually paid for, who said there could be certainly a potential for groundwater contamination. The insulation of the project requires appropriate screening. Town of Simsbury has done a very excellent job in summarizing all of these issues, and I encourage you to read the post-hearing brief, which Town of Simsbury submitted to the Siting Council, which does a much better job at summarizing these issues than I can today. So I encourage you to read that. There's a link on the Facebook page as well, and I think on the town website. The CSC and its ruling said there are already fences and buildings in the area, so their belief is that 100,000 solar panels and vinyl fencing would have no visual difference or impact in that area of town. Can you see where I'm going with this? Adequate financial security for decommissioning should be required, and once again, CSC essentially ignored that argument and said, "Don't worry about it. It will be addressed in the DNM plan, and we have nothing to worry about." And then finally, the historical and cultural importance of the project site certainly requires additional study. The Martin Luther King aspect, the tobacco historical aspect, and so on. They essentially dismissed that, which you can read in their opinion. So the belief is that an appeal would clarify and rule on any legal ambiguity around issues such as lack of notifying in a butter, determining if the Public Act 17218, which is the farm land preservation bill, applies, and at the very least would give the town precious time to explore all of the issues with the development of such a massive, multi-year construction project coming to the town. So again, I encourage everyone to kind of get the facts, and I implore the board, when they meet in executive session, to really consider all of these issues and really, and quite literally... quite literally buy us the time we need as a town to really figure out how we can address all these issues that the town has already brought up. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Elaine.
Elaine, you only get four minutes.
I warned you I'd be coming to public audience. I have a few hats on tonight. The first is resident 12 Musket Trail, and I want to tip that hat to our town staff, especially, I'm glad you're here, Tom, Public Works, after the brutal cold and blizzard we had last week, the exceptional professionalism that we recognize from our town staff that doesn't get tatted nearly enough. So thank you all. Also, staff at Eno and the library that provided warming centers during the bitter cold. Truly appreciated. It was really an unpleasant week, so I'm really grateful to all of you guys. A week from today is Martin Luther King Day, and for Simsbury, it is not just a day off from work. It is an important day in our history, and we have, thanks to a lot of revival of history and knowledge, we understand that our town in particular has a very deep connection to Dr. King and his realization of how the world could be a better place at a very young age. And we will be yet again hosting our annual remembrance of Dr. King's work at First Church next Monday at 2:00. I really encourage all of you to attend. It's going to be yet again a great presentation. We have performances, as we have traditionally, from the Intonations, our senior singing group, and the Henry James Memorial School Select Chorus, which will be lovely. Our speaker this year is Mayan Zahir Mohammed Manon, who is affiliated with the House of Peace Mosque in Meriden, and also served as a voluntary chaplain at the Federal Penitentiary in Danbury for a long time, where he also spent much of his time ministering to a man who was serving time for shooting at Zahir's own mosque. And his speech is called "Love for All, Hatred for None," which is very pertinent and brings Dr. King's legacy into today in a really important way, I think. And I really hope that everyone who can attend does. I know we're talking about some of our historic tobacco farming land tonight, and there is a parcel that is not part of the solar farm proposal, which, Elaine, I know a lot of people, I see a lot of familiar faces, that are concerned with that. The buildings that Dr. King lived in are no longer standing, but the legacy of our, not only our native resident farmers, but our migrant visiting workers that came is an important part of our history. And while resources are limited, it is a crucial aspect of what makes Simsbury a very unique place to be. And I encourage everyone to make the preservation of that history a priority as we move forward as a town, because I think it is something that sets us apart from our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight in public audience? Yes.
Hi. My name is Linda Lowe, and I live at 8 Kilborn Road. And forgive me if I repeat some things that other people have said tonight, but my appeal to the Board of Selectmen tonight is that you go forward with an appeal of the decision of the solar farm in Simsbury. And there's many reasons to do so, but the most important to me is to protect the safety and well-being of the residents of Simsbury by requiring Deepwater do a full evaluation of the project's impact on our water quality. And then the second important reason is to eliminate the use of the land south of Hoskins, which I don't think anyone's addressed tonight, but I know the town feels very strongly about that as well. I think I attended every proceeding and hearing on the farm. I've read all the submitted evidence and arguments, and I expected the Siting Council would conduct their hearings in a court-like manner and review all of the evidence, weighing it all equally. And what I found attending all this, that was far from the truth, but I want to say I was very, very proud to be a resident of Simsbury in the way that they represented us throughout the process. That really, you know, made me feel, you know, very well-represented and just, you know, like I had someone at my back. So Lisa Hebner did a fantastic job presenting the town's concerns to the Siting Council. But as someone mentioned, at times she was ignored during the hearing, told to hurry up and make her point, told that she was repeating herself. I mean, it was ridiculous the way that they treated her, but, you know, she stood her ground to our benefit. And then, as a group, we waited anxiously for the Siting Council to question the town, our town's environmental expert, who had significant findings that this project could potentially contaminate our water. And the Siting Council essentially didn't ask one question of our expert. I mean, it was appalling, and they were apparently uninterested in further examining the findings. The Siting Council's final decision to go forward with the project references Deepwater Wind's environmental experts' testimony while ignoring the town's opposing expert testimony. And I found myself asking during this proceeding, you know, where is their concern for the people who actually live here? So I encourage anyone who hasn't already done so to read the town's post-hearing brief to the Siting Council. The town asked that the petition be denied because Deepwater's environmental review fails to provide even basic assurance that the construction of a large solar facility on a site with a long history of chemical use can be accomplished in a safe manner. I mean, that really says it all. So reading the details from the town's environmental expert on pages seven to 16 of this brief that I talked about, it'll make your hair stand on end. The Siting Council's assurance that a soil erosion and stormwater monitoring plan will be in place also doesn't give me much comfort. Those plans were in place for the similar project that was mentioned in Sprague, Connecticut, and the construction was shut down in November, a month before the completion of the project, because the stormwater runoff was flooding basements and damaging homes. And the project was under exclusive jurisdiction of the Siting Council, like this one is. And DEEP found numerous violations on the project site with their soil erosion plan. So news flash, our solar farm is on top of a big hill. You know, who's going to be protecting Simsbury and the residents from this similar water issue with ours potentially being contaminated? So finally, I ask you to appeal this decision to preclude the building south of Hoskins. I know you asked for that during the proceeding, but the Siting Council thought it was good enough that this historic home is just now bordered on two sides by solar panels instead of the original three. But as you pointed out in the brief, use of higher-efficiency panels could eliminate the need to use this parcel at all. So I encourage you, once again, to move forward with an appeal for the safety and well-being of our residents.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda. Anybody else like to speak tonight? Yes, in the back.
My name is Lauren Ayger. I live at 4 Kilborn Farms Lane, and I would like to make some comments regarding the solar proposal. My understanding of the whole process was that the Siting Council was to stand into the shoes of the town, to stand into the shoes of the residents, and it was that process through Connecticut statutes that would then protect the interests of both the town and its citizens. I do not believe that the process that occurred effectively did that. I, like many of the residents that are sitting here, sat through countless hours of meetings where I watched the Siting Council ignore some of the valuable arguments that were being made, both regarding our zoning, the town's zoning ordinances, arguments ignored regarding our plan of development and conservation, arguments made as to the historical context, which we even heard a little bit about tonight with Martin Luther King, turning a blind eye to all of the evidence that was presented in support of why this project might not be, as it was currently proposed, the right fit. You can't, they ignored arguments regarding forcing procedurals to address all of these issues in development and management plan versus their petition, which is not appropriate. And we're now positioned to now have to take an appeal. What the appeal process does, and why I as well am standing here imploring the town to move forward with an appeal, as I'm hoping we as residents similarly will do, is because procedurally many errors have occurred which position us to take an appeal and allow us to make an argument that the Siting Council, in some of their arbitrary approaches to application of what they believed were appropriate laws, were not appropriate, and it created an irreparable harm on us as citizens and on the town because we weren't heard. So that they didn't stand in the shoes and appropriately apply. Some of that irreparable harm is everything from summary judgment, subject matter jurisdiction, where arguments were raised that they did not have appropriate notice presented, and that raises subject matter jurisdiction. And just dismissing that argument entirely, that's not appropriate, and it's not fair. Arguments to disallow rebuttal evidence, arguments to allow rebuttal cross-examination, all of these things are inappropriate. And the harm of that is that it doesn't allow the participants in the process to effectively present evidence for the record to make it a fair and judicial process. There is no other remedy but to move forward with the appeal to ensure that the town and its citizens can adequately make changes to the way that this is coming into our town. And I just, I don't know how to express it in words any stronger than, "We have no one else but you as our leaders to ensure that that can occur, and we just hope that you're going to make the right decision." I also wanted to ask the board if they can please provide us as citizens with more information on what the next steps and the next process looks like. You, I'm going to echo what Ms. Lowe had stated. I was so proud to be a citizen of Simsbury, sitting in that room, listening to Lisa Hebner and the other representatives of the town, and she steadfastly continued to repeat, I don't know how many times, that the town's priority is air-water quality. That is the number-one priority. However, we're also concerned about our historical and our aesthetics and our, yet they didn't want to hear about our arguments of air and water quality, in fact, refused to allow any rebuttal evidence for a expert that was sitting there with significant facts that called into question some of the concerns about water quality that were raised by the expert of Deepwater Wind. To not afford us that opportunity is absolutely egregious. And I was so proud of Ms. Hebner in the way that she conducted herself and represented the town, and she would not stand down and continue to repeat that her top priority is the concern for its citizens and the air and water quality of this town. Lastly, however it may turn out whether the town proceeds with the appeal or not, I, if we do proceed with the appeal, that we take a look at some method to ensure that we have an injunctive relief to allow the process to adequately move forward so that we don't have deforestation and we don't have the loss of valuable farmland. There was certainly plenty of evidence placed on the record by the Department of Ag that this is the most rich farmland in Connecticut, and that it deserves to be preserved, and it deserves to have an appropriate plan in order to ensure that it does not be destroyed. If Deepwater Wind is permitted to move forward without some kind of preservation, I'm fearful that we will not have something in place in order to protect that.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Yes.
My name is Raymond Hanley, from Westcott Road. This town has done a really good job of the conservation and the preservation and all that, and I've been with that. If this town is going to pursue an appeal, I hope that you would then be prepared to vigorously pursue an appeal to the next guy that's coming down the line when this goes away, if you're successful in prosecuting an appeal or stopping this, because the next guys are going to be worse. Are we going to make a museum to Martin Luther King there? Are we going to buy it as town open space? I'm okay with those things. It's unlikely that's going to happen. I've been at all these proceedings as well. I do want to hear about the water quality. I'm all about the water. I'm unconvinced that that's going to be, you know, we talk about, this is not pristine farmland as much as I would like it to be. It's full of chemicals. They're growing food on it. It's a big contradiction. But my point is, if Deepwater Wind seems, there's inconsistency, I'm a practical person. There's been inconsistencies, and there's points of order that may be out of order. But what I'm about is that the town, what happens to the, that it has the least impact to this town. So if this goes away and the next guy comes down the line, I would hope that we're as vigorous in pursuing the integrity of this pristine farmland and this historical significance and all those things when the next guy comes to town and wants to build on it. I guess that's it in a nutshell. I completely respect the neighbors' views and opinions there. I think the only valid point is the water quality. I think everything else has been somewhat manufactured as far as arguments go. But again, my point is if we're going to appeal this and they go away, then I think that we need to remember it and be just as vigorous in our, what's the word they use now, our vetting of potential people that are going to try to use that land next, because it isn't going to be as benign an installation as this is. And this is not a terribly complicated construction as much as most people try to make it sound like. If we can preserve that land and have it not be used, that would be great for me. But my point is that we can be very clever and beat these people out of town and then lose in the long run again. So when we're sitting here, I hope we take the same vigorousness and same, whatever, pardon me, creativity and can make it work when the next guy comes, because they'll have learned from what's happened here. They're going to truck that stuff into, they'll take that topsoil and put it in a coal mine in Pennsylvania or something, and then that argument will go away, or something to that effect. But so that's my point to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak tonight? Yes.
Hi. I'm Liz Shalansky, 44 Berkshire Way, and I am one of the abutters to the solar farm. I'll keep it short and sweet. I've said this before, I've been here, this is probably the third time I've spoken in front of you. My concern was having a voice, and we did. We, at the town together with the abutters, did speak in front of the Siting Council. The other issue was also about the The other issue was also about the details and how it would impact us. So my greatest concern is for the health and safety of myself, as well as the other people who are living around me. Downhill from the project is our aquifer. I don't know how deep the chemicals that are in the soil will penetrate. The best guess is that it shouldn't affect our aquifer, but I'm pretty worried. And so I hope that you would be as well. We all live in this town, we all have a lot invested in the town, and we all have a lot invested in our safety. So I'm concerned about the details of the project. I'm concerned about what I heard from another project where, you know, the runoff was so excessive that it flooded people's basements. I know there's no basements directly downhill from this, but what's it going to do to our aquifer? So I hope that, you know, maybe the project will move forward, but I hope that somehow we can speak and have a little bit more say in how this goes and how it impacts us.
Thank you, Liz. Sir, anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? I want to make sure I'm not missing anyone. Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to move now into presentations, and we have one presentation tonight on bicycle-friendly community application.
Very important.
It's a yours show.
I didn't think so many people would be here for the bicycle-friendly presentation.
Hot topic.
Fortunately, I'm not alone tonight. We have Diana Moody, Deb Thibodeau, Patty Smith Jacobus are here, because this is really, there's plenty of room back here. It's really a team effort, just like so many things that we do here in Simsbury. It just blinked.
There it is.
Kind of building a little anticipation. Right on to the first one. I guess the question is when we look at the bicycle-friendly community and the fact that we have our bicycle-friendly advisory committee, the question always is, who are these people and how do they represent Simsbury? And it comes down to the committee and all of us that are interested in the subject. It comes down to, we're residents, we're advocates, it's public officials, town staff, it's our Board of Education, it's our Department of Valley Trails Council, we have local businesses, we have bike shops that are clearly invested in this, the Chamber of Commerce, Main Street, they've all bought into the fact that Simsbury does better when we celebrate multimodal transportation. Next one, please. What is bicycle-friendly community? It's a designation that we're going to talk about a little bit tonight, but the key thing is that it's a community that welcomes bicyclists, it provides encouragement, it's committed to making bicycling safe for everyone. And one of the key things that you'll hear throughout tonight's presentation and all of the bike presentations that you'll hear me do, we're not designing it just for the cyclist that's looking to do a hundred-mile day. Our goal, and when we're looking at having trails and when we're looking to have connectivity, is a 12-year-old child. Very proud today, I found out my son rode his bike to school, he's rode his bike to school just about every day this year. I probably wouldn't have let him go today, but I wasn't home. What we get out of the bicycling and bicycling community is it's going to improve the health of the community, we're going to continue to be an active community. There's a reduction in traffic congestion, which really is not so much a Simsbury issue, but when we look at Simsbury and everything that we even heard earlier tonight, it's about a sense of place, well-being, and equality of life, which I really think is what Simsbury is all about. In 2010, Simsbury was the first bicycle-friendly community in Connecticut. We received a bronze designation. We came back for round two in 2014 with our second application. We were able to become the first, and still the only, bicycle-friendly community in Connecticut. What's really interesting, if you look at the infographic down to the right, within the entire country, there's just over 400 bicycle-friendly communities, and we are in the upper tier of that. And when you look at who are the other silver, gold, and the diamond communities, they're inner cities, they're cities, they're, you know, warm climates, they're, you know, New York City, Washington, Boston. And we're basically trying to play in the big leagues, and we're doing it with all of the people here tonight that are really working from the ground up. The big thing is this August, we have to put in our third application to work on maintaining our existing status, or possibly, we can find out if we're a gold community. It's a big stretch to even think of that. Next one, please. As you're going to hear, and we're going to transition it over to the rest of the team, when the League of American Bicyclists is looking at our application, they're looking at the five Es: encouragement, enforcement, education, evaluation, and engineering. Patty, I think you're going to take it from here? Oh, Diana, I'm sorry.
Next slide. One of the Es, as you said, is encouragement. We tried to do that year long, we're doing it tonight, hopefully. We're talking to you now to help build a, and help, excuse me, sorry, to help embrace a stronger, friendlier bicycle culture. We do that year-round, but one of the biggest months is, May is National Bike Month, and we do a lot during that period of time. We have helmet giveaways, we have programs at the library, we have bicycle safety, we have bicycle classes. It's just an ongoing, packed full, packed full calendar. We have bike-to-walk school events, we also have those that aren't during the month of May, we have them also in the fall. One of the things that was started a couple of years ago was the National Bike Challenge, which we were incredibly successful in this challenge. We've logged in that time period over 100,000 miles. That's 100,000 miles that people got out of their cars and onto their bicycles. That really says a lot for encouraging. We actually were, one year we were the first per capita, and another year we were fifth in line of, per capita of our, of our stats. We also have a National Bike Liners, you see this bicycle up here? That bicycle was painted by one of the art students at Simsbury High School, the National Art Society. And so what we do, we bring them the frames, and then they create a bicycle, and then they create the frame, and then we put the bicycle together. And that's in part of the Simsbury Bike Fleet, I'm sure a lot of you see it around town. Actually, one of the favorites, which Lisa Hebner used to ride, was one that was Black Macaw. And so that's really been quite popular for us. Also, we actually launched Bike Month with the First Select and Ride, and that has always been very successful. And if you don't have a bicycle, as you know, we'll provide a bicycle for you. So that's, that's a big event for us. We also have a bicycle-friendly business, the Bicycle Cellar was our first bicycle-friendly business in town. That also helps to foster and encourage a bicycle-friendly community, especially with our bicycle shop. One of the things, when I look at what we've done in encouragement, not just within this community, we have really been the trailblazer, because as Tom said, we were the first bicycle-friendly community in Connecticut, we were the first silver bicycle-friendly community in Connecticut. And other communities really come to us, you know, they, they want to know how we did it. So we have mentored a lot of communities. So I think that's one of the biggest encouragements of all, because when we do this, what we're, in essence, what we're doing, we're building a better community for everyone. And not, not only in terms of bicycling, when you're talking about, when you look at these trails, they're not bicycle trails, they're multi-use trails, they're multimodal trails. So you're on your bicycle, but you see people walking, you see people rollerblading, you see people in wheelchairs, you see people in walkers. So that's really encouraging people also to get out and to be healthy and to build that better community. The events that we're, sorry, losing my voice. So all of the events you can find on Simsbury Free Bike Facebook page, and also, simsbury.bike has all of our events and everything that's going on. Next slide, please. The other, another E is enforcement. I can't say enough nice things about our police department here in Simsbury. We're fortunate to have the police force that we do, the commitment that they have. They engage very well with the, with the, with the cycling community. They help represent what we do on Bike Month. One of the fun things that they did was, you see where they gave, where they did positive ticketing. So what they did was whenever they saw a child riding a bicycle that had a helmet on, they gave them a ticket for free ice cream. And so there were different businesses in town, Peachway, Tall Meadow, so that's another means of also encouraging, because they participated, they gave out the tickets so that these kids could have a free ice cream. So that was their reward for being safe. And that's really, I think, the, you know, they do a lot, but I think not just for cycling, but for the community at large, they really promote safety. That's their first and foremost role, I think, is they promote safety. You'll see the signs, the LED signs that they have, they have them, you know, you see them mostly around the school areas, they do that, but they also put them on Iron Horse Boulevard, because, you know, that's such a well-used path. And although we have here, you know, it's, it's reminding them, you know, to give the cyclists enough room, they have also put signs up that remind cyclists to obey the rules. So I think that's important, too, to remind them to stop at stop signs and to slow down. So again, it's not just, you know, they think on, on both sides of the trail, so to speak. They're very, very quick to respond to concerns, they do a really great job on their Facebook page to responding to concerns, safety issues, they, they have done safety presentations with SCTV. They, they really are, they're helping to represent us. When they, when they have the enforcement, they do have cyclists on the trails when they can, you know, to ride the trails and to, to help people if they needed, and to help people feel, you know, safe and secure. They don't always have the force to do that, but we're happy to see them, so that when you do see them, whether they're on a bicycle or whether they're walking, just remember that they're here for this community, keeping us safe. Next.
The education efforts of the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee focus on bike safety for cyclists of all ages, but we also focus on sharing the road and sharing the trail. So really, we're targeting cyclists, motorists, and pedestrians, basically everyone in town. Some of our initiatives include the Bike Safety Training Program and physical education classes in Simsbury Public Schools for grades four through six. Simsbury Public Schools has developed an exemplary program, it was the second in Connecticut to offer on-bike bike safety training in a public school, and I believe we are still one of very few schools that is, is offering that type of program in Connecticut.
It's also in New Britain.
In New Britain, now too. Simsbury Public Schools also offers bike safety training for summer PE students in the high school, and I don't know if anyone's seen, been downtown on the day, that we take 100 high school students on a road trip from the high school to, to the businesses downtown. But it is quite a sight, and actually, several of the repeat volunteers have noticed that we're actually seeing significant improvement in these students who've been doing this every year, or started their training in the elementary school. So it's, it's impressive. We also have an acclaimed Safe Routes to School program in three public elementary schools, that would be Tooton Hills, Latimer Lane, and Squadron Line. This is based on the federal Safe Routes to School program, whose mission is to improve conditions so that more children can walk and bike to school, promoting healthy lifestyles and a healthy earth. The premier events are the Walk Bike to School Days that we have in, in the fall and in the spring on National Walk to School Day and National Bike to School Day, and those are quite impressive as well. The photo on the right are kids using the rail trail to walk to Latimer Lane School on Walk Bike to School Day. The bottom right picture are students biking to school in a chaperone group, that was to Squadron Line. And it's just amazing watching these kids. They take the instruction, they're learning it in, in PE class, and they do great. The committee has a strong interest in expanding the Safe Routes to School program, so as I mentioned, it's only in three elementary schools, and we would love for it to be at Central and at Terrafill, or even at the middle school, or, or private schools as well. We also, the Simsbury Public Schools also offers a unique Train the Trainer program, which is the PE teacher workshop, and they have trained PE teachers that come from all across the state and learn how to teach bike safety, so they can develop a program in their school. We also offer community bike safety classes in collaboration with many different partners, including Simsbury Public Library, Simsbury Free Bike, Parks and Rec, local bike shops, and others. Examples would include safe cycling, maintenance and repair classes, cycling instructor classes, commuter classes, et cetera. We also use SCTV, social media, literature, trailside tables, and, and other avenues to reach the community. I will add that our Simsbury Free Bike Facebook page is, is quite active, and we do see threads on various other active Facebook pages around town, and we do try to insert educational factual material on sharing the road for both motorists and cyclists. And I will note that we are observing a trend in improvements in some of the tension that is expressed between motorists and cyclists on some of those threads, and there's been a change over the past four years, and it is different from some of the threads that we see in other towns. So I think we are actually having an impact. You may see brochures around town, you know, we do lots of different things to spread the word about sharing the road, sharing the trail. And really, this is for, this is for everyone in town. You can grab one of these on your way out if you're not really sure about what are the, the laws in Connecticut about sharing the road for motorists and cyclists. Finally, we do have some bike clubs that are popping up, the high school has had a bike club, Squadron Line is starting some after-school bike club activities. Those are opportunities for us to have, have trained adults, working with students, to provide instruction and, and to provide mentoring. So we're extremely proud of our educational efforts. We would like to continue, we would love to expand, and with support, and continued support with our partners and the town, then hopefully, you know, these kinds of activities will continue and maybe they will grow.
Good evening. I'm Patty Jacobus with the Bike Ped Advisory Committee and Simsbury Free Bike. One portion of this very important application that we'll be submitting next year, later this year, actually, there's a segment on evaluation. Not only do we rigorously, as a committee, always inspect how we're doing based on our target objectives, we do that every, every year, we set objectives and we critique ourselves. But going forward, when we apply for bike-friendly community, every time we apply, we get a, a status, but we also get, what you see on the right there, a feedback report from the League of American Bicyclists. And they tell you how you're doing against your goals, and at the very bottom, it says "Key Steps to Gold." So what we do is we take the recommendations from the League of American Bicyclists, and we marry it with what our committee feels is important. and we marry it with what our committee feels is important. And most importantly, what we think the residents of Simsbury need. Because what the league thinks is important doesn't always match with what our town needs. And we think it's really important to marry those up. So, first, I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for all the support we've gotten last year for the budget money to put together a bicycle pedestrian master plan. Up until now, our Bike Ped Committee really has been harvesting low-hanging fruit. We've been doing things that don't cost a lot of money, were very obvious, you know, brought us a long way, it brought us to silver. But we're at a critical point now where what we want to have done, they're bigger ticket items. We have to make choices about where we spend our money, which projects are the most important. So, Tom Roy has been working with Fitzgerald Halliday along with our Bike Ped Committee. And we are in the process of putting together this bicycle master plan, which will give us a roadmap for, okay, what do we do next? Because the low-hanging fruit has gotten us to silver. But what does the town really need? So, one of the things that we'll be doing is, we looked at this evaluation that came back from our last application, and we did very well. If you get a copy of this, you can see that we were very close to gold. I doubt that towns go from bronze to gold, so we became silver. But at the bottom of that document, you'll see several things that they think are really key to being a bicycle-friendly community at the gold level. One of them is bike racks. Sounds simple, but there are some key places in town where we don't have bike racks. And I'm sure many of you have been to Starbucks or some other places and have had to step over bikes laying on the ground on the handicap ramps, which causes safety issues and whatnot. So, one of the things that we are working on is trying to come up with some innovative ways to get funding and interest in putting some more bike racks. Number one, to get people off of the trail into our businesses in town and have a safe place for people to be able to leave some of these expensive bikes. The updated bike plan was listed by the league. And we're going to have that in May?
Yeah, early spring.
We're going to have it in early spring. So, we can check that one off the list. Annual Bike Challenge. Deb, I have to say, has been our leader on the National Bike Challenge. We've had it for three years now. They really underreported how great a job the town of Simsbury did. We had some remarkable results. So, we can check that off the list. Complete Streets. A couple of years ago, we came to the board and we asked for a Complete Streets resolution. It wasn't a policy, it was a resolution. And it gave us the opportunity to talk to the board about what Complete Streets really is and why it benefits a town like Simsbury. So, I don't know what Fitzgerald Halliday say about Complete Streets, but it's still on their list. We have to decide if it's right for Simsbury. The next one is improved connectivity and safe transitions. What that means is we have five villages in Simsbury. Have you ever tried to get from Terriffill to Town Center on a bike? Just asking. Or even from Wheat Hog, unless you're just going on the bike trail, into Town Center. There are a lot of neighborhoods. Kids would love to ride bikes. A lot of parents just aren't comfortable sending their kids off to town. So, one of the big issues we're looking at is mapping, connecting routes from all those villages into Town Center and to all the great places and the amenities we have in town so that kids can get there, seniors can get there. And it's not dedicated bike route, something that's safe. The last one, the safe transitions. Tom did some hocus pocus and got the DOT to come into town. And they looked at all the transitions on our bike trail. Every place a biker or a pedestrian has to cross the street. There are seven of them, eight of them.
We have six critical crossings where, for example, an easy one to identify is Wolkett Road.
Right.
We all know the speeds that people travel on Wolkett Road and all of a sudden, mid-block, there's a crosswalk there. So, DOT and some of their experts, engineering team, our own town staff, and we went out to that site and five others and said, what is the low-hanging fruit, what's midterm and what's long-range best practice to get this as safe as it possibly can be? Because again, when you're looking at pedestrian and bike interaction, that's not, it's just a tragedy that we're going to avoid.
Yeah. And they came back with a pretty impressive document for us.
And we are currently waiting.
Okay, to see if we get the-
On grant.
Right, on a grant for that. So, we're hoping we have some good news on that front. And that is another one hopefully we'll be able to address. And then, one of the other things that they had mentioned in this feedback report is two-way enforcement. We'd like to have bicyclists reminded by our police officers about blowing through stop signs. It doesn't do any of us any good to have that kind of conflict between motorists and cyclists. So, they had mentioned two-way enforcement. We've talked to the police department, and I think there's some things that are underway there. So, I can go to the next slide. So, that's what the league wants us to do. One of the things that we use as a tool for reporting back to the league and to the town, essentially, about how we're doing is a thing called, a tool called, a bicycle account. And what it does, we have changes to our board year to year, we have changes in residents, we have changes on our bicycle pedestrian advisory committee. We like to collect year-over-year data on how we're doing. And we've been at this for, what, five or six years now?
Six, seven.
Something like that, seven? Seven. So, we now have data for seven years that shows what's happened with our bike parking, how many bike racks we have, how many slots for bikes we have. So, we can see that there's been a long-term commitment and there's been growth. We did the same thing with the number of students trained. Deb talked about our fourth, fifth, and sixth graders getting trained, all of our PE teachers getting trained, the number of students that are part of the Safe Roots to School program. We have those exact numbers for the last seven years. Tom's group with all of his dedicated bike lanes, Sherrod Street, streets in town, we calculate how many miles of that has increased. So, we have year-over-year data on that. What else? We've done some Bike Ped surveys informally as a bike committee. Like I said, they've been Survey Monkey, informal, but they gave us some direction. Now, we're going to have the survey from the Bike Ped Master Plan.
Which had 850 respondents.
So, it's great. So, we should get some really good information from that. And then also, I hope all of you know about Simsbury Free Bike. It's our regional bike share, largest in the state, started in Simsbury. Our first year, we had 150 riders. We're pushing 2,000. We get people from all over the state that come and use our bikes. Even people internationally when they're visiting use our bikes. So, we have some really good data on that. We're able to capture that and share it with the league because they find our program to be a model program. We're the only regional bike share in the state. We actually have some of our bikes in New Britain at the Museum of American Art. West Hartford has asked for them. We have new locations opening this year. It has really become a very robust program and really a model for a lot of other communities. It's been nice.
And it started with a bunch of bikes that were piled up-
Yeah.
-by public works.
They didn't know what to do. Exactly.
It was actually Tom's idea.
What to do with the bikes at the police department.
It was totally Tom's idea.
Public works.
All right.
So, we've been collecting that data. And it really creates a very vibrant story about Simsbury's commitment to making it a healthier, more connected, bike-friendly community. So, I hope when that is done for this year for the application, you all take a minute to kind of just skip through it. It's a good document.
The Ryerson numbers are impressive. I mean, we've been working just, you know, last application, this application, four years. And you've seen on the trail. And if you're on a weekday now, it's busy.
Oh, the year-over-year numbers on the trail are always double digits in terms of activity.
It's a beautiful problem to have. Could you get it on your bike trail?
It is.
Your multi-use trail.
Yep.
Good, Sean, next one. Engineering and connectivity, this is something that we're looking at, as Patty mentioned, with our pedestrian bicycle master plan. But we're also looking at a sidewalk inventory now that's also going to be looking at that same level of connectivity. The nice thing right now is the DOT is actually participating in the Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan Advisory Committee. We actually have a representative from their staff. We've been very honest in, when it comes to the meeting, we love him because he's the one who's going to lead us hopefully to the grant money. And a lot of what we've been able to build here in Simsbury has not necessarily cost more because we've always leveraged the grants. And as much as the state is tightening things up on a lot of their spending, multimodal transportation is still highly, highly dependent upon grants. And those grants are still, at least last time I checked, still liquid. So, we've done a lot with signage, very inexpensive, but it starts to make Simsbury look a little different. It makes it welcoming to cycling. It lets people in motor vehicles know that they should expect bicyclists in the area. Traffic calming, I think there's not a neighborhood in Simsbury that doesn't, from time to time, have somebody who's driving just a little bit too quick. And this is something that we are looking at through the bike program, we're looking at it through the Bike Ped Master Plan. It's something that we work on day in and day out to make sure that our roads are as safe as possible. I always say that when we talk about complete streets, it goes back to 1940 when engineers said we're going from point A to point B, straight, level, wide. And how can we move people as fast as we can? But they forgot to look at the fact that these roads go through neighborhoods and they're part of our community, and it needs to do more than just move cars from point A to point B. Next slide, please, Sean. We have the new trail. We're hoping to see some significant progress on the Terriffill connection this coming year. And then, we are looking to see connection from Curtis Park to 10 and 315, which really builds the two ends of hopefully getting Terriffill connected by trail so that, again, we cannot even have commuters that are moving out through Bloomfield and into Hartford. But we also have residents that will be able to ride their bike to the park. I think that's when you really talk about destination. That is key for us. The Farmington River Trail, we are still part of the East Coast Greenway. We are going to make sure that we keep that designation for a while. There were some other towns in the region that felt that we should reroute the East Coast Greenway to go through their community. I think we have such a head start in all that we've done, that's not going to happen. We're moving, Sean. We're moving quick. Economic benefits.
Okay, economic, yep. How many people know what the East Coast Greenway is? And how long it is? How many miles? East Coast Greenway goes from Maine to Florida.
Hundreds, hundreds.
And a portion of it goes through Simsbury. The section of trail that we receive the grants for that go through Terriffill will be designated as East Coast Greenway. That is an enormous bonus for Simsbury. Number one, people who own property in Terriffill should be really pleased about that because I think it's going to really do some wonderful things for that section of our town. But I don't want any of us, certainly in our little committee, we're trying not to be complacent about our status because since we earned our bicycle-friendly status, silver and bronze, everybody in the Farmington Valley is working on getting a status similar to that. We got calls from Canton to go and coach them. We got calls from Farmington. Farmington is now a bicycle-friendly community. Avon is creating a new Town Center. They will be rerouting the bike trail through that new center to be able to attract those people before they get to Simsbury with their money. Just saying. So, I think that we have to realize that those people, these kids on the right-hand side, they were traveling the whole East Coast Greenway. I bumped into them at the Avon Country Deli. I talked to them a little bit about how much they were spending and where they were stopping. These people have a lot of money in their pockets when they come through. And the fact that we are East Coast Greenway, we're going to be getting all kinds of new traffic coming from the north, from the north, down through Simsbury. So, I think that we can't forget about, yes, it's healthy, yes, it's safer, but there is an enormous tourism and economic opportunity for the town of Simsbury. And I think that we need to get in front of it and really understand it. We are not the only towns that have done this. There are small towns across America that have been totally revitalized by a bike trail. And I think that you've seen Red Riding Hood's basket, you've seen Avon Country Deli, you see all these businesses that are along the bike trail, they're doing a booming business. People love to stop on their way. So, just saying, the whole area behind Andy's, that whole area that's adjacent to the trail, it's just ripe for businesses that bikers can stop at. And we've seen what it does to home values in a number of other communities. I think we've all heard about Simsbury being ranked ninth in Money Magazine. I think bikes were mentioned in that article. I think it's an important part of our story in Simsbury. And I talked about how bike routes have transformed small towns. Everybody is trying to take advantage of their bike front and their businesses, home values. We've all been here long enough to know that people used to argue about the bike trail going through their neighborhoods. Now, it's the first thing they list when they list their home. They'll say that they're right on the bike trail. So, the Chamber of Commerce is behind this. They changed their logo to include a bike. I think that speaks a lot. So, I think that that's an important component, and I think that we shouldn't forget about it.
Just to wrap things up, when we look at a lot of what we're doing, we're looking at connectivity, we're looking at safety. This is my target audience. It's not the intrepid cyclists. It's kids and families, and it's getting to the park, and it's getting to the school, and it's getting to Jay Foster's or Tommead or wherever your favorite ice cream is. This is, again, I think what it all matters is making Simsbury or keeping Simsbury that special place. Keep going, Sean. There you go. Healthy communities, people of all ages. Again, what I think attracts people, and I often think that part of my job is that when somebody's relocating to this region, it's making sure that Simsbury is the top on the list when they're talking to realtors.
I know, I know. It's working fine. All right, it's all you. Oh, okay. Practice this. But, first of all, our Board of Selectmen has been extraordinarily supportive of the crazy things that we've asked for over the years. And we have asked for some pretty crazy things. But they've been generous, they've been supportive, they've been inquisitive, and thank you for that. Every spring, May is Bike Month, as you know. Diana mentioned it. I think pretty much everybody was out there last year. It was great. We'd like to expand it to more of a community ride, get more people involved in it this year. You've seen the kinds of things that the League of American Bicycleists is asking communities to do. They're the pros at this. They know what people in towns need. I'm not saying change policies or make ordinances, but we need to be creative about how we do some things, like add bike racks. And we have to constantly be looking at how things are changing when it comes to multimodal transportation. It's evolving. And what was in maybe four or five years ago, it's evolved. You know, signage has changed. The attitude about Sherro is evolving. So, I just ask you to bear with us as we bring new information to you. Encourage department and your staff in town to be aware of what we're doing because there isn't a department in this community or in town that isn't somehow connected to what we're doing. And we need their help as well. The support funding our trails has been extraordinary, and we appreciate it. The Board of Education, they have been so supportive of the bike safety program in school. We didn't even finish our conversation, and they said, yes, go for it. And that's when we had the fourth, fifth, and sixth graders getting on-bike training. We'd like to expand that. So, I don't know how we go about getting more, whether it's funding or whatever, but we'd love to have more of that bike training at more of the schools. Also, any of the literature that comes out from the town and communication that goes to residents, you're printing it anyway. If there's some way to get some kind of safety message or safe driving practices or news about Bike Month or what a Sherro is, if there are ways to leverage that, call us. We'll give you ideas. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks a lot, guys.
Before I, see if any members of the board have any questions, I just want to say this application, it's not like the shared application for college. We're talking about a big binder.
It is.
And it's a real partnership between the bicycle community and the town led by Tom Roy. So, I really appreciate that partnership. Does any member of the board have any questions they wanted to ask?
No, appreciate it.
Yeah. Great. Thank you. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you. Thanks for the support.
We are going to move on now to the first selectmen's update followed by the town manager's update. As of this meeting on January 8th, the State House and the Senate voted overwhelmingly to restore cuts that had been made to the Medicare savings program. Our governor has promised a veto. But there are members of our community who rely on this program, so I just wanted to bring this up because it is something that we're watching closely, and I appreciate the leadership from Senator Whitkows and Representative Hampton on this. January 17th, I'll be hosting a coffee and meeting greet at the senior center from 1:00 to 2:00 o'clock. On Saturday, January 27th, Representative Hampton and I will be holding a joint office hours at Storyteller's Cottage from 10:00 to noon. Also a reminder, I also regular office hours from 4:00 to 6:00 on Mondays, right here at Town Hall. With Christmas behind us, Paine's will be doing its annual Christmas tree pickup next week. That's the week of January 15th. So, Paine's customers can put their tree out on garbage day. All Waste is doing theirs the week of January 29th. And this is our first board meeting since the holidays, and I wanted to give a big public thank you to all of the town employees who worked on Christmas Day in New York. thank you to all of the town employees who worked on Christmas Day and New Year's Day to keep us safe and to keep our roads clear because we did have snow on Christmas Day. I extend my thanks as well to non-town employees, including our volunteer fire department and EMS and the handful of businesses that were open, the employees who were working there. Thank you. So with that, I want to turn things over to Sean Kimball with the Town Manager's update.
All right. Thank you, Eric. And I apologize, I think I'm losing my voice a little bit here, but I'll try to be brief. Just a few quick events coming up in the next week or two. Tomorrow night, the Teen Advisory Board Meeting will be at the Teen Space in the library. We have a program on how to prepare your small business exit strategy. It's going to be hosted on Wednesday night, 5:30 in the program room. Also, something new, the Open Gym, which runs Sundays from 12:00 to 4:30 now at Henry James Memorial School. This is open to everyone to come and have fun. The first hour, from 12:00 to 1:00, is dedicated to allowing individuals and families with individuals who have developmental disabilities to take advantage of the gym. And again, individuals and families are encouraged to bring their own basketballs, other recreational equipment, and kind of a great program here, especially on these cold, cold weekends. Elaine mentioned earlier the Dr. Martin Luther King Day Program at First Church on Monday, January 15th at 2:00 p.m. Also a college funding workshop to be held on Thursday, January 18th at 6:00 p.m. over in the program room at the library. And also Senior Center Free Tax Assistance. We've done this for a number of years. Thursdays, February 1st through April 12th, and Tuesdays, March 6th through March 27th at the Simsbury Public Library. This is in partnership with the Simsbury Library, Senior Center, and AARP, offering free tax assistance. Again, trained and certified AARP volunteers will be helping prepare and electronically file both federal and state tax returns. So appointments can be made available from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. and can be made by calling the Senior Center. Barring any delays, it looks like final as of an email I just got, the revaluation notices should be mailed out this week. Notices will include both your new and old assessed values on your property, instructions on how to make an appointment with the revaluation company to discuss the revaluation and requirements for appealing revale with the Board of Assessment Appeals. Under achievements, we just found out today, and I'm glad Tom Roy is still here, that the town of Simsbury Department of Public Works was awarded a 2018 KERMA Excellence in Risk Management Award. This is a really big deal. This is one of only four issued this year and actually this year, I think for the first time, comes with a $2,500 risk management grant that they will give us. So again, kudos to Tom and his staff. They really, as somebody who used to do risk management in my original role here in town, Tom has always been at the forefront and his guys have really taken this on from top to bottom as a real organizational priority. And it shows. If you look at the numbers, if you've ever attended our insurance committee meetings, our public works department is unbelievable in their frequency and severity of any injuries if there ever are any. So it's really remarkable. So kudos. And just a quick, onto more fun topics. The winter is certainly here now. We have had, believe it or not, 19 winter or snow or ice events so far already and we've expended unfortunately about 40% of our total winter budget. So hopefully things turn around, but this is not a great start to the winter. Tom is here, if you want to ask him any more questions. It's really more his fault, not mine. No way this is my fault.
Seven signs, town's closed.
Yeah, seven signs. So, you know, but it's a serious, you know, we're monitoring closely. Obviously, we go through this, not our first time, but we're certainly trending in a difficult direction from a budget standpoint. So hopefully, things turn around, warm up, no more snow, no more ice. And finally, and I'm not happy to announce this one, but the Chief of Police, Peter Ingrithson, has informed the town, he will be retiring on March 1st. He's served with the town for 18 years in this role. Under his command, the police department has truly become a model agency for its professionalism, its commitment to community policing, and earned the federal accreditation, the Calea accreditation, the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. I will personally miss his professionalism, but also his great sense of humor. I know we all know the chief and we all wish him very, very well in his retirement, much deserved. The Town Manager's Office will be working with the Police Commission on interim plan and recruitment process going forward. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Sean. These bullets will all be going out in news and announcements later this week. If you don't already subscribe to news and announcements, that's something that you can do on the town's website. Okay, let's move on to Selectman action. Item A is possible action on the proposed water shortage ordinance. I'd like to have some discussion, but first, let's put the motion on the table. Is there a motion to approve the proposed ordinance, Section 157, water shortages?
I'll make a motion, Eric. I was on the subcommittee with Mike Payne doing the last edits to this, so I'll make a motion that we approve the draft ordinance of the water shortage ordinance with the following three amendments. Number one amendment is in Section 157-2 definitions, that we replace the current definition of person in 157-2A10 with this definition. "Person shall be construed to mean to include an individual, a corporation, a partnership, a business, a trust, an unincorporated organization, or any other group or organization." That recommendation was suggested by Cheryl and she can speak to why she made that recommendation later. Mike and I agreed to put it into the amendment. The second, relative to the same area, was the typo that was identified by Don in Section 157-2, Area 3, that we stipulate after the 28th word in the first sentence, the statement the board deems appropriate, before the remainder of the sentence, which reads, "shall determine that the adequacy of the town water supply is threatened after consideration of the following items to wit." And then the third amendment is in Section 159-9, violations and penalties. Add after the first sentence of the paragraph, a new sentence, an additional sentence that reads, "Fines associated with the activities of a corporation, partnership, trust, business, or organization will be levied against the entity and not employees or members of those entities."
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes.
Cheryl.
Unless somebody else wants to go first, that's fine. Just a quick explanation of why I felt we should add the amendments that Chris agreed to. I recall from our earlier discussions about this ordinance that there were a lot of concerns about who was going to end up paying fines should we have to enforce these violations. And as Selectman Askam brought up on several occasions, and I agree, we should not have the waitress in a restaurant who serves somebody water end up paying a $50 fine because they are found to be individually liable for that when their employer has told them to serve water to somebody in a restaurant. I feel the same rule should apply for employees of, say, a landscaping company or a car wash or other people who are working, you know, working hard for their living should not be held to be responsible for something that they're required to do as part of their job. So if a landscaper tells their employee to water something that falls, you know, as a violation under this ordinance, they should not be individually punished for that. So that was that. The reason I did not jump in and second it right away was because during public audience, the gentleman from the Terrifield Waterville raised, I think, a valid concern that they were not referenced in this and it sounds like they were not included in the discussion, which concerns me. I don't know if that's true or not, and maybe somebody here who's worked on this ordinance can tell me. But he made a valid point that we do have essentially a water company here in town and if they were not consulted with regard to this ordinance and how it will be triggered, I think that was a mistake on our part, maybe perhaps unintentional, but I'm glad they brought it to our attention. So is there anybody who can answer that?
Well, I will. When Chris and I met to talk about this, we never, please accept our apologies, discussed Terrifield Water. I messed up. I'll take the brunt of that. Just didn't even think about it. And I know when we were talking, we were really focused on just trying to get out an ordinance that we could reasonably live with. I had concerns. Chris and I talked a lot of stuff through. We met two or three times at least, aside from various casual conversations. I had concerns about it, but I really felt it was important to bring this ordinance forward for discussion and actually heard two of the individuals who spoke tonight raise some good points that I had not thought about very honestly. And frankly, that's the beauty of the town of Simsbury is people bring up stuff that we didn't even think of. So I am, I will not be supporting this at this point. I do want to have some more discussion. I have some concerns, more philosophical, about where this is going. But I think the intent is to protect the town and I think that's a good thing. But again, I'll apologize for my oversight to the folks up in Terrifield. I messed up.
Eric, if I, so I'm more than happy to work to accommodate language adjustments that will satisfy the concerns of the Terrifield Water Company. Terrifield Water Company absolutely is integrated into this ordinance. They are specifically stated under definitions of water company, which is an important component of this, the Aquarian Water Company, the Avon Water Company, or the Terrifield Water Company. So they were not ignored within this process. I was not involved with the Conservation Commission putting the ordinance together. They may or may not have reached out to the water companies. There was no reason, from my perspective, as we were having hearings, that Mike and I were accountable for reaching out to each and every entity that was impacted by this to get further insight. So I would be more than happy to make accommodations. What I would stipulate is, you know, the ordinance is designed, as is every ordinance, to provide a framework for decision-making when we have to make decisions, but to leave enough flexibility for what we as a board have referred to in the past, for us as a board to apply the wisdom of the moment. And I actually think the concerns that were expressed by the Waterville, Terrifield, I mean, the Terrifield Water Company, which again, I would be willing to, as we've done with everyone who's voiced concern, to make some wording changes. But the concerns that they expressed, I believe that through the framework of this, the direction of it, as well as applying the wisdom of the moment, would more than eradicate the concerns that they speak to. And again, I'm willing to wordsmith this to accommodate, you know, the needs of, you know, all important groups. But I do feel that their concerns are fully integrated into this. And when you look at the framework and the flexibility that's provided, every concern that was expressed, I think is more than manageable in the process. There, I mean, I've seen someone from the Conservation Commission raising their hand. I don't know if it's appropriate or not.
Yeah, my concern was not really a criticism. It was just that they don't appear to have been included in the discussion. I realize they're referenced in here. But asking it to be excluded from an ordinance is a strong sentiment, which indicates to me that they have some concerns that need to be addressed. Whether or not it turns out that the ordinance remains the same, and I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure that this is heard.
I agree. The distinction I want to make is the difference between a commitment to an ordinance that we have believed in the past has value versus, you know, let's not support it because there are some specific concerns. What we've done with every specific concern in the past is meet with the group and make adjustments and then bring it back to the board. And so that's the spirit that I want to embrace.
And I agree with you on that, exactly.
So if I understand the, or, Chris?
Go ahead.
So if I understand the tone of the conversation, that the direction it's taking is that I think we're in spirit and in agreement with the intent and the overarching intent of the principles behind what we're trying to achieve here with this, but potentially step back away from tonight to reassess the comments and concerns of Terrifield, that group, to make sure that, or add more clarity, to Chris's point, it may be in there, but add more clarity potentially to it, which I'm in favor for. I'm also very concerned, though, again, is that I, you know, we represent the town of Simsbury and everybody in Simsbury is a resident of Simsbury and should be governed by the same rules and regulations and concerns. And we can't have two Simsburies in any concern or ordinance we adopt. Or can we have the attitude going forward that we have different classes and different groups of people?
Mm-hmm. Sean?
So, Chris, well stated, but I do disagree with you as four of you or three of you have already heard and you two will now hear my monologue. This is government overreach at its definition. This is a well-intentioned ordinance that we've all had significant either constitutional or charter or ordinance or personal or otherwise concerns. The first draft of this had police, the police officers potentially violating the Fourth Amendment and going on people's property. This is a really well-intentioned idea that's going to keep, this is going to keep happening. We're wasting town staff, we're wasting meeting time, we're wasting money by posting for these public hearings and we're going to keep doing this because we're going to realize, again, very well-intentioned, but there's a mistake or there's a concern or another valid point is raised and I think it's time to stop, candidly. I think this was born out of a knee-jerk reaction to what happened in the summer, well-intentioned. I think our residents are very responsible, education, this board taking it upon itself to make sure that we make it a priority, we make it a topic. By no means are we not concerned with water conservation. But again, fundamentally, sending the police department into businesses to find either the waitress, waiter, or business owner, sending police officers onto property, and I know Chris will disagree with me, but this ordinance says that we can do that as a board of Selectmen. We may never employ it, but it does give this board, by vote of four of us, the tool to do it anytime we see fit. And fundamentally, I think that is a mistake and candidly, I think it's been a waste of time for town staff and we should stop that at this point.
I don't think we should have ordinances that will never be used, but we do have other ordinances, and this is very consistent with, that try to address a problem before the problem happens. And similar to this, when you begin to discuss what is the framework for what we do if we have a water shortage and we have to make decisions, and I would advocate the fact that it's taken us a year to figure out how to put on paper what we would do, is pretty good evidence that we, there's a value to thinking it through before it actually happens. But when you do that, what you inevitably end up having a discussion on, if you care about the details, is what if you do if people don't follow the prescription and the ordinance? Sean, I would say it's absurd to say that we're going to find people for not shoveling a fire hydrant. On some level, it's absurd that we're going to find an elderly person for not appropriately shoveling or taking care of their sidewalk. But we have ordinances that speak to that because we know that these are things that we may have to manage and if we do, we will do them as appropriately as possible. And all those ordinances have a balance between prescribing what is the possible process we can do and leaving tons of flexibility to apply, quote-unquote, "the wisdom of the moment." If you remember back to the fire hydrant ordinance, we all talked extensively, even from the Public Safety Subcommittee, we don't ever want to find someone. So we have all sorts of ways of managing the process that we don't actually end up doing that. So to say this is overreach would, in essence, say that a lot of ordinances that we have are overreach. There is the possibility that we would have an event and there is no doubt that we made a determination that if there is an event, we want to apply our stewardship and have influence over how that event is managed. This is simply providing the framework to be able to do that.
So if I could just respond, Chris, I understand where you're coming from, with the exception that we have A through J. If you struck B through J, I would agree with you. Then it's a fire hydrant ordinance, then it's a sidewalk ordinance. This is if your faucet is dripping. This is nitpicky overreach. We can go into a business and tell a business what they can and can't do without us being an expert on the topic. We know when a sidewalk has been plowed, when it has not been plowed. Do we, I mean, do we actually know when the aquifer is in danger of drying up? No, we don't. And we say we're going to consult with folks. It's not going to be this board. We need to be very thoughtful and careful about the power that we give future boards and then they don't have the benefit of being part of this discussion or watching the minutes or truly understanding what we intended. If you tell me that... If you tell me that 157-5A is all we're going to pass, no lawn watering during times of deemed drought emergency, fine. I agree with you 100%. That seems reasonable. Everybody knows when a sprinkler's on or off or if it's alternate days. That seems like a reasonable community thing to do. In fact, I think a lot of communities around the country do such a thing. But if we're going to determine whether your faucet is leaky or you're going to wash your windows or not, or, you know, we can, again, go find the waitress or waiter down at a business, that's not what we're here for. That, to me, is the overreach piece, Chris.
Okay. So I would... So you've fallen into my distinction category, Sean, which is what you've just stipulated, that you don't really object to having an ordinance. It's the specifics of the language that you object to. I mean, you basically said if we got rid of, you know, these 1 through 6 that you find objectionable, you wouldn't necessarily object to the ordinance. So I'm just asking the board tonight that we not resist the ordinance, but continue to wordsmith it if people have, you know, legitimate concerns about some of the issues that were raised. I would say that some of the two other issues that were raised are also things that could be wordsmithed through the process, so...
Well, just to be very clear, if there's a B through whatever, I don't see how I would support it. So we can talk about wordsmith, we can talk about town time, we can talk about staff. We have a lot of other important things to be concerned with. We have a budget, we have a time of transition with new town managers, new finance directors, new police chiefs. And if we want town staff and town attorney spending time on continued wordsmith, then so be it. But I disagree with that usage of town staff.
We just invested a year in this.
And it was a mistake from that point.
Time to scrape an ordinance that, you know, generally, there's been consensus has value. I mean, I wouldn't... I would say at this point, we should invest the time to get it over the goal line as opposed to just, you know, scrapping the work that's been done over the last year.
Yeah, I'm one vote, so...
I would say part of my inclination to get it over the goal line, as you say, is that I have a strong inclination that the state is going to do it for us. There is some push towards the state, you know, water plan, and I think that we should take advantage of the opportunity to lay out parameters that we as Simsbury feel are important. And I'm not disagreeing with you, Sean, that a lot of it, you know, seems very specific and maybe trivial to some people, but we could face a moment where we are in an emergency and we will, you know, as much as we all would hate to do it, you know, we would have a framework to fall back on. Whereas, you know, as we've seen in other emergencies, the state has come in and said, "Look, this is what you're going to do because you don't have anything else." It's, you know, we've already seen the state water plan starting to take shape, so why not be ahead of that curve?
Yeah, Mike.
I think we want to continue to look at this, and where I will ultimately come down right now is, we spoke earlier about the state coming in and telling us what we should do on our town, i.e. the Siding Council. I think we've got six folks up here, with all due respect to the Siding Council, hell of lot smarter than they are, and we know what's best for Simsbury. I would rather have us working on this than the state come in and tell us what to do. So because of that, I would much prefer that we put our belief in what we believe to be important for Simsbury in a document. So I would, under that guise, I would be willing to continue to look at this.
I would be supportive to, you know, passing this, which I think is important in terms of our stewardship to the group that put this together. And it's been a long process, and I'll take a lot of ownership for how long the process has been. But we could pass it and then continue to meet and then come back with amendments to this, which is, you know, very easy for us to do. That way, it gets it on the books, but also leaves open a good faith effort to address the concerns that people are expressing.
So right now, there's a motion on the table to approve this. I'm not convinced right now that we have the votes to do that, but we could take a vote right now, and I would personally be comfortable with that.
Can I just make one more discussion point? Would you entertain tabling your motion to have the Terriffill... To at least have a conversation with Terriffill Water Department to address their concerns and bring it back to the next meeting?
I would be willing to do that. I would suggest that if we do that, we want to have a Subcommittee open hearing or meeting like we had before. And I also think we should address a couple of the other issues that were raised, which I think are very manageable in the process.
Yeah. You know, I'm not saying, you know, do away with it, but I... That concerns me.
You would have to notice this is a public hearing again, which again is my point of town staff time, town staff resources.
Well, the concern has been raised at a public hearing, so could the Subcommittee address it?
Once you make the... I mean, you're the expert. Once we make a material change to this, we would have to renotice and provide public comment at a...
If we make a material change, but...
The Charter says it's up to the determination of the county attorney whether or not to change the material, and if so, requires a provisional public hearing.
Okay. So it depends on the change that's made. Is there an objection to tabling this motion until we can address these concerns?
At this point.
I mean, my preference would be to approve and amend, and I think technically, there's really no difference between the two, except it does address a commitment to, you know, have this passed. But I'll concede to the wisdom of the larger board, and if the desire is for, you know, Mike and I to manage a process of meeting specifically with the Terriffill Water Company, but also in that hearing or meeting, allow other comment and then come back, you know, to the board, I'm receptive to that.
Okay. I think that's the right thing to do because that's the side of it.
Well, I think the amendment process would entail just as much as, you know, another hearing, so...
The two processes are the same, so...
Fundamentally, I would rather not pass a flawed ordinance. I just think that going forward, knowing that we're going to... Is not, you know, not the right way to handle this.
Yep, I'm totally comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Okay. He needs to withdraw his motion there.
So I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
And then I'll move to table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on now to C, which is the approval of tax refunds. Is there a motion to approve tax refunds totaling $28,178.77?
I'm fundamentally against tax refunds. I'll move that.
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. C is the Simsbury Farms gift. So a Simsbury family has generously offered to donate up to $76,000 toward the construction of two basketball courts at the Simsbury Farms recreational complex. Those basketball courts have been a part of the Simsbury Farms master plan since 1998, but they have yet to be built. And Jerry's with us. Is there any backstory you want to share on this?
You've probably heard a little bit of the story before. You know, it's been in the Simsbury Farms master plan from 1998. We are... We proceeded with board and commission approvals. We've got the 8-24 through planning, and it's currently an application in front of the Conservation Commission. As you indicated, the family has expressed interest in donating up to $76,000 towards this project very generously. So we've got, I guess, three things we're actually, you know, asking for tonight. And I should mention Mark Demming, who is the president of the Friends of Simsbury Farms, is here, as well as obviously Attorney DeCrescenzo, who put the agreement together. But we're asking to accept the gift through the Friends of the Farms in the amount of $76,000 towards the construction of the courts. We're asking to approve the agreement between the Town of Simsbury and the Friends of Simsbury Farms, and we're asking to... Do you approve and refer to the Board of Finance supplemental appropriation in the amount of $76,000?
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I... Yeah, this is wonderful. Let me put those three motions together then. Can I have a motion to accept, with our thanks, a gift from the Friends of Simsbury Farms in the amount of $76,000 for the construction of basketball courts at Simsbury Farms, and to approve the agreement between the Town of Simsbury and the Friends of Simsbury Farms, and approve and refer to the Board of Finance a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $76,000?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure.
Moving on to item D, which is the hanging of street banners over Hot Meadow. This past December, the longtime volunteers that had regularly hung banners across Hot Meadow, you know, for various town and civic events, notified the town that they would no longer be able to perform that service. Town staff is recommending now a moratorium on hanging banners until a new policy is developed regarding the process and any fees, et cetera. Tom, is there anything addition you wanted to add to that?
Well, I think the one thing, when we first found out about this, we had one in December, we took care of that, and it looked like we had a break until April. Unfortunately, there was a request to hang a banner for Martin Luther King Day celebration, which was discussed earlier at First Church. Last week, it was certainly out of the question due to weather, but I think with the board's support, we would hang that banner this week, get it up, and then ask the moratorium go in effect, so that everybody from here until April 1st has a due notice.
Okay. And you think that it'll be a couple of months to get the policy?
I think it's going to be a conversation between Public Works, Planning, Parks and Rec, and I think what we're trying to do is make sure that we come up with a reasonable fee. And I think, you know, we want to make sure we provide the service. I think we also want to make sure that we understand the work that's going to be involved and if there's going to be a limitation on when and type and numbers of banners that are put up. One of the discussions that came up, especially with the storms last week, is should we put up banners in the middle of winter? I don't know if that's much worse than putting them up in the summer where you have thunderstorms, but it's something that we want to at least have a little bit of time to look at. And being with several departments and having to come back to this board, we thought that would be a good length of time, and of course, if we can get it done sooner, we sure will.
Anybody else have any questions? Yeah, Chris?
This is just two questions, educational for me, thank you. So we have... There are banners that we do put up as a town, and not all... Or better said, not all banners are always put up by... Have been put up by this.
The banners have been put up by longtime volunteers, not town staff.
Okay, but so we never put banners up. It's always been this volunteer, no matter what it was.
I believe that, I'd say 90-plus percent, I think once in a while, there was a couple banners that were put up maybe specifically for a town event, but generally, these mysterious volunteers were doing all of this work early on the weekend mornings.
Okay. And then the second question is, is there a formal process by which a request for a banner gets put through, and who does... Who is the arbiter of that good taste and content and all that?
Boy, that sounds loaded question. Go ahead, Jerry.
I said good taste, you... Sorry, okay.
Yeah, we do manage a system. As Tom had stated this evening, there... When we started to talk about what the timeframes were, we only had one in the book for mid-April, and then the MLK banner request came in for basically a week out, so it kind of drove a little crank into our discussions about this and as its four-month gap. But again, there's a process, but there isn't necessarily policy if two people want the same week.
How long ahead should you let somebody reserve? Should it only be for town events and...
Can I come in Friday and ask for it to be done on Monday?
Yeah, how many colors, what's it made of, all that kind of stuff.
Cheryl?
As far as the cost for this goes, is this going to be a new budget item? I mean, there's going to be a cost associated with having town staff take over this responsibility. And do you anticipate that being absorbed by the fees that you're going to charge or no?
I'll be honest right now, this is all relatively new, and one of the things that we've been working out is which department is best suited to handle this, even within Public Works. Would it be Buildings and Grounds, or would it be the Highway Department? Would it be something we would share?
Well, no matter who it is, there's going to be a cost.
Exactly. I don't believe that it would be 100% revenue neutral at this point. I don't know. You know, we're trying to figure out what's the reasonable fee to hang a banner.
Well, that's what I'm getting at with that.
Yeah. A few months back, we actually went out...
We'll have to see that.
We tried to go out and privatize this, and we went out to bid, and it turns out clearly that, you know, companies that do billboards and that type of thing could not do it for a reasonable price. I mean, it was several hundred dollars each and every time it went up, and several hundred dollars each and every time it went down. You know, we only had one bidder, but it was not something that we felt really was viable.
Well, it's time and equipment and...
Insurance.
Insurance, you know, whatever.
Cheryl, to follow up on that, right now, we have some administrative staff time into the process, but we do not have boots-on-the-ground installation of staff doing that. Again, as Tom stated, that was done by volunteers.
Well, I'm heading towards, you know, the big budget question. So is that going to appear in somebody's budget, and then we're going to make a decision on it, or do you not anticipate that showing up?
I think we're going to end up having to put some level of number to it somewhere.
Yeah.
Can we be honest here? I mean, what does it take, five minutes for one guy to stand on one side of the road and a lady to stand on this other road and hoist up the banner? 10 minutes? I mean, we're really going to talk about putting this in as a budget item when we're doing master plans?
No, just which department is going to take on the cost?
I mean, we're about to do a gold-level submission for the bike-friendly community, and we're not billing anybody for that. We've engaged from this board of helping our civic organizations, and what I don't want to get in here is, all of a sudden, now we're going to charge the nice folks that are doing the MLK celebration $200 to hang a banner, and they're going to come out and ask for a waiver?
That's why I'm asking the question. If we're going to charge a fee because it's going to cover the cost, or are we just charging a fee?
Seems like we're getting into the nickel-and-dime range here.
Sure, I think the initial discussion was, since our volunteers were no longer volunteering, as Mr. Roy mentioned, to look at privatizing it, that didn't look like a viable financial alternative due to the costs associated with that. That's why we're asking for a little bit of time to develop policy.
And I totally agree with you on that. We're going to need some time to think about that.
And again, I can tell you that we would probably be doing things slightly different than what it was done in terms of two volunteers. Just, you know, like Sean mentioned, our compliance with safety, we would probably have a third person out there. I've only done it once or twice myself, so unless we had police involvement, we would probably have three people. If we can make an agreement with the police, they can come out for a few minutes straight down the road, and we would do it with two. And the cost isn't the 10 minutes that you're there, it's the cost of what you're not doing. And, okay, we've got to get two guys, we've got to plan what day they're going to go down there, you know. So there's a little bit more than just the time of setting up the banner on site. The other thing that would be a factor is they used to have whoever was asking for the banner to be installed helping out. As I initially looked at it, we probably wouldn't go through that effort if it was with town staff. We would probably have guys that, once they get down to a habit, they would just go out, do what they do, get it done. But we haven't had enough people to go through it, so that I have a real good sense for how would we do it. Would we do it before work, when traffic's lighter, and do it on overtime? Would we do it, you know...
So the question tonight is really whether to put a moratorium on, and I think this is a good conversation, but it's tactical. And I think that when you have proposed policy, that we perhaps talk about these details at that time.
Can I just revert to my prior point, that this is why government shouldn't be involved in certain things, because it becomes too damn complicated?
I would love to have our volunteers back, believe me.
Government cannot do certain things better.
Trying to reduce this to like a college prank where it just happens.
Seriously.
Volunteers are awesome.
I think this is a good discussion only for... My concern is, and Sean, I enjoy your spirit of your concerns, but my concern, though, is that what is our process? Because you... You know, I love your point. The MLK folks come and say, "Could you help us in the spirit of this recognition of humanity?" And we do it, and then... But then, somebody comes out and says, "My daughter's just getting her 16th birthday. I want to put a banner up for her." And you say no to that, and then, but then they pay... So I just, I want to understand more about the process.
It's a 5K road race. It's a...
Yeah. So this is a great reason to put, I believe, a moratorium to think through the process, which I know Sean loves, thinking through the process a lot more. But maybe we get that at the other end, saying no.
Sean's going to get up on the ladder and put up those banners.
There might be some new volunteers after this meeting.
Before this completely devolves, is there any...
Not further, my friend.
Before this completely devolves, is there any, is there any other conversation on this topic? Okay, so let me put the motion.
So I make a motion to approve the moratorium on hanging of the banners across Hot Meadow Street adjacent to Schultz Park until town staff identifies a specific policy and process for managing this work.
I'll second that.
After the MLK banner goes up.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. Moving on to item E, the approval. So in this one, two farmers have requested the use of town land for agriculture for the 2018 planting season. Anything you would add, Jeff?
Not much. These farmers have been using the land at least since I've been here, which is four years. They were good stewards of the land. This is essentially a renewal. They're going to be using it in the same way, planting the same crop, using the same practices. The only change here is at least one farmer who was here tonight, Mr. Napolitano in the corner there, has requested consideration of a multi-year lease. As the board probably recalls, last year on the Dewey Farm, the farmer for that particular piece of property requested the same. We ended up giving him a three-year lease for the reasons that he was actually improving the land by adding organics. It was a little more difficult soil to farm. I don't know if the conditions are the same. This piece is actually the Barn Door Hill piece, the east side of Barn Door Hill Road. But again, I think Mr. Napolitano, he can speak for himself, but he plants a garlic crop, and that requires that the plants be put in in the fall. So it would kind of off, off the timing of the lease. So he's going to invest essentially in a crop that he's not sure he's going to be able to harvest if the lease is not renewed. So it's a reasonable request. So again, I kind of left it open for either a one-year or multi-year extension for your consideration.
Yeah. Are there any questions?
I have no problem with a multi-year.
Yeah, so we talked about a multi-year. Would, would two years then make sense? Because that would give them the certainty that, that, you know, the crop could be harvested? Or would anyone propose three?
What is Mr. Napolitano asking for?
Yeah.
And what I said at that time is I just want to renew, because it was December, but I would be very interested in seeing a multi-year situation, the reasons that he presented. I think a three-year lease is probably acceptable. I'll take what I can get. But as the town engineer has said, garlic's in the ground.
Right. And my other, my only other question is, are both of the farmers, so Mr. Hall, is he also requesting a multi-year?
He has not requested that. So I, again, I kind of leave it open. If it were your option, you would want me to offer that to him? Yeah, it's just not something I pursued with him ahead of this meeting.
Okay. So we could put a motion on the table for a three-year extension or a three-year lease for both of these farmers?
I have no issue with that.
You said for both?
Yes.
Even though Mr. Hall hasn't requested that?
Yeah, I mean.
He could always decline and bring it back to us, I would think.
If he, if he were to decline, that release him from the requirement to pay the lease for that year? I don't want to trap somebody either and say another thing.
Well, no, we're, by giving him a three-year lease, he would have to agree to pay for three years. I'm not sure we should.
He hasn't, yeah, to your point, he hasn't requested it.
Yeah. That's what I mean. I mean, we were imposing an obligation on him that he hasn't agreed to, so.
That's fair.
What if we were to offer either the gentleman either a one-year lease or a three-year lease? And let them select. And that way, if Mr. Hall wants a one-year, and Anthony would like three years, they can go that way. And we got the paper to see which way they wanted to go.
So. And I would also suggest that the extension or the lease continuing would be subject to receipt of rent on an annual basis.
Yes.
Agreed.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay.
And is there any, Sean, is there any, my concern would be, which I appreciate, sir, the report in here is complete about how all obligations have been met satisfactorily and possibly beyond satisfactory. On an ongoing basis, though, during the mid-period of that term, let's say that that land does not get kept up. And what is then the liability of the leaseholder, leasing, whichever? Should we consider anything around that as well? Like the ability to withdraw if it's not, if it cancelably before the end of the three year term, if the land falls into disrepair, disuse, whichever? Is that something you should be concerned with?
There is language in the lease, and again, I'd have to review it again, that protects the town from those types of occurrences. I think we'll take a closer look at it if we're going to extend it, just make sure. The town attorney certainly would look at it.
Yeah, I wouldn't have been, I wouldn't be so concerned during a one-year period of time for you to find it and then take act that it's probably going to lapse by the time you get done with it. And a three-year, my concern is that. So you feel there's sufficient language in there to be able to withdraw back in three years? You say yes, fine, move on.
I believe there is, but I think we'll take another look at it to make sure that it's sufficient.
Okay. Can someone put the motion on the table in?
My, can we do two separate motions then, since they're going to be two different terms here? I don't think we should lump them together just in case Mr. Hall wants to come back and.
Sure. So are we talking about giving him a one-year or giving him the option?
I think Mike's solution was sufficient. We approve both the one and the three.
Right. His motion is going to be an option, and the other one is going to be, but here comes the town attorney.
If I may.
Please.
I would recommend for Mr. Hall a one-year term with two one-year options that he may exercise if he chooses.
To extend, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And there is language in the lease. If they don't keep up to their covenants, then they're, they're in breach of lease and.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Moved.
And the other motion for Mr. Napolitano would be a three-year lease.
Okay. Should we vote on the first one so that it was?
Sure. I move that we offer Mr. Hall a one-year lease, subject to two, two one-year options at his discretion, subject to rent being paid at the start of each lease.
Okay. So Sean put that on the table. Second, Chris? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move that we offer Mr. Napolitano a three-year license renewal with the annual, with the rent being paid annual upon the first of the year.
Second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Item F is, so F and G on the agenda is a request to approve the submission for two state local bridge grants. So item F concerns the Firetown Road Bridge over Bissell Brook. So the way this grant works is that the town's expected to contribute 50% of the project cost, which in this case is $179,000. That money is, is already available as part of the 2018 capital improvement program. Anything you'd like to add there?
Just a general statement. We've been taking a closer look at our bridges, our larger bridges, and trying to prioritize and also leveraging funds. This is an opportunity that we're not sure it's going to pan out. It's subject to state budget. And again, that's kind of iffy right now, but certainly to get the grants out there or the grant applications, the potential for a large leveraging of our own funds, which we didn't anticipate when we actually budgeted for those. So we think it's a good opportunity. These two bridges haven't been touched in about 20 years. So they, they're showing a little bit of their age. This will prolong their life, reduce the long-term cost to maintain them, and I think it's a good investment.
Are there any other questions for Jeff?
Just a quick one. So we approved the full amount in the 18 budget, so.
Well, we actually have funds exceeding the, the funds needed for these two grant applications. We're looking at other projects and how to leverage those.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thanks. Is there a motion to authorize the submission of a state local bridge grant to rehabilitate Firetown Road Bridge over Bissell Brook?
So moved.
How about Sean and Cheryl second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. G is basically a similar application, this one for $168,000 grant. And this is, this is the rehabilitate Barn Door Hills Road Bridge over Bissell Brook.
Correct. Same story, really, about the same age, similar defects in the bridge. It's a good opportunity to hopefully extend the life of the bridge for 20 to 25 years.
Okay. Is there any questions on this one?
No.
Is there a motion to authorize the submission of a state local bridge grant to rehabilitate Barn Door Hills Bridge?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes. Thanks, Jeff. H is, we're asked to revisit the charge to the Public Building Committee for the relocation of Simsbury Community Television. So in 2016, the Board of Selectmen charged the Public Building Committee with finding alternative location, and that's because of expected construction at the senior center, which obviously has been, has been delayed. So, you know, deferred to at least 2019. Now, the Public Building Committee has come back to the board asking to be released of that charge. So I don't know if there's anyone here to speak to that.
I could say a few things. The building committee was just sort of interested in knowing where they stood on this. It had been on their agenda for over a year. As you may recall, we were at a point where it was going to be relocated to Henry James Memorial School as part of their Phase III project. So I wanted to kind of bring it to your attention now before the budget to kind of discuss, you know, how that might fall out. And if there really was a need to relocate SCTV at this time. As you know, we got a small project in Eno Renovations. It doesn't affect their functionality right now, and so it's not an immediate concern, but it may be in the near term. Probably not this year, but maybe in the future years.
Okay.
So that's about all I can add.
Okay. Are there any, any questions?
As a liaison to the Public Building Committee, I can, I can tell you that, as Jeff knows, they explored several locations and did have some thoughtful consideration of that. So I, I think if we come back to the senior center project, they will have some suggestion. I think we've, we've laid some groundwork there. I am a little concerned about the ongoing, the project that's going on now impacting SCTV with noise and construction activity, but I guess we're all going to find that out together.
No comment on that at this point.
I know.
We're going to lose our picture real quick.
Yeah.
Any other, any other questions, Sean?
So former finance director, soon-to-be finance director, again, because the other one's not here. We're talking about Henry James again in a couple of months, are we not?
Henry James, correct. Last year, Henry James was bumped out one year on the CIP, which could change. And the senior center was two years.
Okay. So the problem is, is now the, now the events are out of order. So if we were to decide to forego Henry James, but then decide in a year and a half's time that Henry James was a good idea, because we're talking about the senior center, it would seem to me that we want to keep the Public Building Committee at least somewhat engaged in this topic to look for savings or opportunities to, to become part of that building. Because I think we all talked about it, that it was, and I think the Board of Ed agreed that it was, sounded like a pretty good idea to have our media hub and our middle school in one location. There was obviously some safety concerns and location concerns, but that's what I think Jeff Yu is engineer and the Public Building Committee were looking at to make sure that those could be overcome, attaching it to the end of the building or other places that would mitigate the safety issues. So if, if this revisit means stop doing that, then I don't think we should do that tonight. I think we should keep them engaged in the conversation because now the projects are out of sync with each other. Does that make sense?
It does, but I think that all they're doing now is looking at alternative locations to Henry James, because Henry James is not on the table right now. So they were looking at other locations, you know, other buildings, other facilities. And they would like to be able to stop doing that with, you know, they actually had a subcommittee that was, was actively looking.
So can they hang tight for like 45 days?
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand if they're, if they have it, if we have, we have no project, they've, they've delivered their opinions and their ideas and their options, correct? But there's no project, so they're not doing, I mean, they're not being built for work right now, correct me, okay? But Sean's point is well taken. If there's something that's potentially back on the board, they're going to get re-engaged or we're going to take them off, take them off the job and then put them back on the job. But, so, I mean, now I'm missing something. They literally, is there, they literally sitting there having just to do busy work and, and, or they cannot, can they just work on something else for a little bit of time? This is just a formality.
I, I don't want to speak, I mean, I am just the liaison, but perhaps if we give them other guidance, because their initial guidance, I think Jeff, maybe you could help me on this, was, as to what they were supposed to be looking into, could perhaps change. I mean, if we, we told them, you know, this is why we want you to keep it on your agenda, perhaps you could suggest a, an action, you know, an action plan for that.
Yeah, again, they were looking at opportunities that might come up, both, you know, in terms of individual space that could be leased, or maybe.
Right.
Opportunities where some town building may become vacant, and there was a space that they could take an opportunity for. At this time and place, I guess there is none of those. And they've looked at those in arrears, you know, maybe in the, maybe you want to keep their eyes and ears open for new opportunity. I don't know. They seemed a little bit anxious to get it off their agenda if, in fact, there was nothing to look at.
Okay. Well, right now, if I'm understanding correctly, there is no immediate need to relocate SCTV.
That's correct.
So can we, can we have a motion to release the Public Building Committee of the charge to find an alternate location for SCTV?
Before you, so are we going to, I just want to understand, when, if we, it sounds like this project is going to be reconsidered in the near future. Sean, help me out here, is that right? Is that your turn talking?
We're about to talk about it again in a month.
So are we going to then ask this organization who's provided us, who is the experts and provides us values, to, again, work on our behalf on this same project? Even though that may be just recertifying the existing list? Is that potentially what we're talking about that could happen? We're going to re-engage them, and they're going to reapply their expertise and give us an opinion. So I don't understand why removing it from the, is it just annoying to them? Is that why you're going to?
I mean, this feels like a formality.
It is. I mean, have we ever voted to take something off Public Building's agenda before? And I can't recall doing that, Chris, of you.
They're very dedicated volunteers and take their charge very seriously.
There's no doubt about that.
I mean, if we could just express the thank you for what they've done, please hang tight for a month or two, and we'll be back to revisit the charge once we get into the capital improvement plan would be.
Because we need their help.
I think the sentiment of what we're trying to convey here.
And I think the other clarification is there's no expectation they're going to come up with a place, alternative right now. So I think that can be a.
Right.
A verbal clarification for them. So, I think that can be a verbal clarification for them.
We very much appreciate what they've done.
Yeah, thank you.
Leave it there, but we're not expecting anything for the next 60 days.
Okay. So, does that clarification work without taking any formal vote? Okay.
Yes.
Cherry gets to tell them that.
I get to go back with that.
Let's move on to I, which is, is there a motion to authorize the acting town manager to sign the operating assistance grant contract in the amount of $6,322?
So, moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. J, there are, so there are a number of programs that are run by the Social Services Department, and these items are around helping to fund those programs. So, I, I'm sorry, J, can I have a motion to accept a donation with our thanks in the amount of $5,000 from the middle school semi-formal dance for the Social Services Department?
So, moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
This is really outstanding. These kids came up with this on their own and did a really phenomenal job. There was a number of strong family support, so this is something that's just really cool. So, thank you. Thank you for doing it.
So, we have a motion that's been seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Kay, can I have a motion to accept a donation with our thanks from Garrity Asphalt Reclaiming in the amount of $5,000 to benefit the Keep Simsbury Warm program?
So, moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on this?
And they do that every year, so again, that's really outstanding as well.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay. And the motion passes unanimously. Lastly, can I have a motion to accept a donation with our thanks from Robert Hensley and Associates in the amount of $1,500 for the Simsbury Food Closet?
So.
Second.
Cheryl seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Again, our big, big thanks for those three donations. So, I just want to make sure I've got our place. Moving on now to other business. Item A, Deepwater Wind, the proposed solar project. So, on December 21st of last year, the Connecticut Siding Council unanimously gave its approval for a 26-megawatt solar farm on the north side of Simsbury. So, this being the first board meeting since that decision, I've asked Town Attorney Bob DiCriscenzo to give an update to the board, both what took place, where we are in the process, and the next steps in the process.
Yes, thank you. Just to remind you all, the proposal was for a declaratory ruling that a certificate environmental compatibility public need was not required for the construction, maintenance, and operation of a 26.4-megawatt solar photovoltaic electric generating facility on 289 acres on five separate parcels. As you stated, Mr. First Selectman, December 22nd, the council approved the petition and mailed it through all parties of record, and that date triggers the appeal period. And I don't know whether we distributed the decision or not, and the findings of facts, it's available in the town manager's office, is also available online. It includes an opinion regarding the application that was submitted, but was, I was in attendance when they acted on it, it was a unanimous decision of the siding council. That outcome was not a surprise to us that participated in the proceedings as a party, and town of Simsbury was a very active party and a very, I believe, a very thorough presentation of its position, as we talked about a few months ago. So, where do we go from here? The town is a party with full appeal rights. Forty-five days from December 22nd, which is the mailing date, is the deadline to file an appeal, and that deadline, we believe, is February, Friday, February 5th, 2018. It avoids counting the first day and the last day and trying to figure out whether Sundays and Saturdays count. Friday, February 5th, is the working deadline that we're going with. It is up to the Board of Selectmen to decide whether or not to appeal the decision. There is a number of issues, and next steps are that the order requires the applicant to submit what's called a development and management plan, commonly referred to as the DNM plan. The town may comment on that DNM plan and/or issue interrogatories to the applicant on details of the plan. And a good analogy of what the DNM plan is, is you're all probably more familiar with a site plan in a zoning context. This is the details of the 289-acre proposal that they have put before the siding council, and the siding council has to act on that DNM plan. The DNM plan must include, but not be limited to, a final site plan, erosion and sedimentation control plan, resource protection plan, site construction phasing plan, storm water management plan, plans to comply with the DEP's recommendations for storm water management at the solar farm construction project, and I'll turn this into a letter to you and provide it to you so you don't have to take notes on what I'm telling you tonight. This particular DNM plan also requires the applicant to identify the barns to be retained, and a visual mitigation plan, post-construction restoration plan, and a vegetation management plan with quarterly inspections, and a decommissioning plan. And these are the issues we brought before the council, and the way the council addressed them is kicked it over, really, to the DNM plan for the applicant. And you may recall that one of the issues we raised fairly comprehensively was the issue of screening, and we hired, you hired, an expert to propose a visual screen that was a 12-foot berm with some plantings above that, and I think it's fair to say the council thought the 12-foot berm was excessive, but in their order, they did say that the town and the applicant should work together to come up with a screening plan that would be satisfactory to both. So, where do we go from here? Number one issue is whether or not to appeal the decision. I don't expect you to make a decision on that tonight. You'll probably want more information about that, which we will supply you. There are legal issues that we presented that are the type of issues that could be decided on appeal. First and foremost is the applicability of the new Public Act 17-208, which would have required a much more comprehensive process for this project and would have required more substantive local input than the truncated declaratory ruling process did. And you probably recall, the new law took effect July 1st, and when, you know, they submitted their application, June 28th, we argued, Department of Agriculture argued, the neighbors argued, that the new state law applied to this application because it was procedural and not substantive, therefore it related back. And the council considered that and decided against it, saying, well, no, it was filed on June 28th, the law in place on June 28th is a law that applies to this application. We believe that's a legal issue that would be subject to interpretation by the courts. Second legal issue is they missed a couple of butters in their notice requirements. The budding property owners, who were also a party, raised that before the council. We joined in that issue before the council, and the council rejected that issue essentially on procedural grounds. The third legal issue that we think is first is of substance, is the failure of the applicant to meet the water quality standards, DEP's water quality standards, which is one of the two factors that the council must find have been met before they can prove it. The other is air quality. The only two factors for the council to consider under declaratory ruling process is the air quality and water quality standards as published by DEP. That would be an issue to explore on appeal. Another issue that the order lays out is, you know, appropriate screenings. They have an obligation to work with the town to develop a screening plan, as I mentioned. There's also the promise that they made in a hearing to test the wells, the private wells surrounding the property. The order requires them to keep good on that promise. Page six of the opinion also requires the applicant, or suggests the applicant, explore transfer of the property ownership to the town at the end of the 25-year period. Twenty-five-year period is the term of the power purchase agreement that the applicant has secured, and that's why they want to build the facility in the first place to supply power to the grid for 25 years. After that, they really have no need or use for the property. They're not land developers, and the siding council suggested there should be some discussion with the town as whether or not the town would like to take ownership or some form of ownership through an easement or development rights at the end of the 25-year period. Next is a potential reconfiguration of the array. We raised an issue of the parcel five array, which is south of Hoskins. We said, you know, that's the most obtrusive, the most egregious use of the land. Things south of Hoskins should not be covered with solar array, and the council suggested in its order, did not order them to do this, but suggested the applicant may wish to find a way to move the remainder of the south of Hoskins array in parcel five to the north side of the site. The applicant did revise its proposal to eliminate half of the array, and the council suggested perhaps there's a way to move the rest of the array to the north of the site with no development on the parcel five, which is south of Hoskins. And lastly, the council also required, suggested in page 10 of their opinion, that the applicant may wish to consider the so-called 300-watt solar panel rather than the 240-solar watt panel. By using the higher wattage, you need less panels. If you need less panels, you cover less ground to meet the 26-megawatt limit of the proposal. So, that's a quick brief of where we are, what the town's options are, what the applicant's required to do, and what the siding council suggested. I don't want to, I don't want to suggest that the order done to do this, but there's a number of issues that the council suggested that the applicant should explore further with the town. I'll take any questions at this time.
Thank you very much for that summary. Does anyone have any questions?
They always have a question. How does enforcement work in the DNM plan? So, they're supposed to do something, they don't do it, what happens next?
Well, that's where the, that's where the rubber meets the road in the DNM plan. There has to be an enforcement agency, and that enforcement agency is either the town for some purposes, such as the erosion, well, no, not even the erosion and sedimentation control plan, the building code, I guess, would be.
So, are town officials are fined a violation, or how does that work?
They're fined a violation, but most common is the town would find a violation and cite that violation to the siding council. It would be up to the siding council to enforce the DNM plan.
So, if the siding council, do they have the option to ignore our violation?
They have the option to give less credence to our hypothetical violation than the town would.
Is there a hearing? What's the process?
There would be a hearing on a violation of the requirements of the DNM plan. So, they retain jurisdiction, that the council does, of this project that they've approved through construction and presumably through operation all the way to decommissioning.
In your experience, can we expect any more consideration from the siding council than we've already received from them, which is not a lot?
Well, I think it, that's a.
You're being very polite.
Yeah. I'll be polite in my response. We'll have to wait and see.
Well, I'm a little uncomfortable with wait and see if it's a question of whether we appeal or whether we go forward trusting that the DNM plan is going to be enforced as indicated.
What we will need to do next, as a party to the proceeding on behalf of the town of Simsbury, is to make every effort to require that the DNM plan be as detailed as possible, because if we want to enforce it before this siding council, and some of you were present to see how they operate, we will need to have detailed orders within that DNM plan that if we find a violation, we can cite a clear-cut violation of a detailed order. That makes any sense?
If the siding council chooses not to agree with us on our violations, is that appealable?
Yes, that's appealable. That would be a decision, as decisions are defined under the UAPA, we could appeal that.
I was just, help me understand the timeline again. I understand the 45 days, that's clear. When does, at what point down the road are they obligated or not, or is it likely that you do see your first draft of the DNM plan?
They did not set a deadline for the submission of the DNM plan. They didn't say submit it first draft by X date. We've been told by representatives of the applicant that they want to move forward quickly on this. We don't know.
I can't imagine they would submit something until they heard whether we were going to appeal or not. That's most likely.
Sometimes companies build through an appeal, sometimes they don't. Depends on, I think it depends on what form of financing they have, because whoever's providing the capital for this may say, you know, let's get clear of the appeal, and then we'll go from there. We just don't know. We're not privy to those details of their financing structure.
So, we say, let's say we say go on the 5th for an appeal, and it's filed. What is, what are the next steps? What happens? What's a timeframe look like for that appeal process?
Well, that's a good question. The appeal is under the UAPA. It's a record appeal, meaning we can't bring new facts into it. We appeal on the record, similar to a zoning appeal. After that, it's in Superior Court, Hartford, Dunbritton Superior Court, which is right across the patio there from the siding council. There would be a pre-hearing conference with the judge. There'd be a briefing schedule set for all parties for submission of briefs, and then there'd be reply briefs thereafter. There'd be a hearing on the briefs. So, easily a year, year and a half. And if some of the issues are legal issues, and for instance, if we were to appeal, the town were to appeal and prevail on the PA, the Public Act argument, PA 17-208, that's a legal issue that would have significant ramifications. It's very possible that if we were to prevail on that, then the applicant would take that to the appellate court.
Just last, these questions have been posed to me by members of the public, so I believe it's appropriate to ask them in a public setting. And this is also educational for me. The first question was, if we move forward through the appeal process, and I have no position here yet, we would still engage the same attorney for this process? Is that, would the intention most likely be?
That's up to you.
But that's, we're comfortable, up to me, okay. Second one, is it, from a cost standpoint, the legal costs? These are borne through what? What process?
We would provide an estimate of legal expenses. It would be substantial. It would not be insignificant. There's almost 400 findings of fact in this decision.
Right.
I wouldn't want to give you an off-the-cuff. I'd want to consult with Jesse Langer from our office, who's specialist in this area.
Right, so I'm not looking for the specific cost, but just for not standing for the public. We would be appropriating funds from our budget to continue this appeals process, which could be quite lengthy. It's not, this is not in any way, any way, shape, or form already prefunded or considered?
No.
Back to the appeal line there. So, is it true that we would, we could potentially file the appeal, and again, I have no position yet on that, but they could file a DNM plan and start construction? And those?
We would move for a stay.
Okay.
We'd file for the appeal. If you, if you say full steam ahead, we would move for a stay, file the appeal and move for a stay.
Okay.
And the court has the power to stay any further movement on the project, no DNM plan, no nothing. If the stay were rejected, then they would have the legal right to proceed with the project at their risk, because if we were to prevail, or any party were to prevail in the appeal, they would have to undo those aspects of the project that being forward on if, so I don't know whether they would work through an appeal or not.
But that's significant to our decision-making, is if we were to lose the argument and the court doesn't stay, the construction, that potentially would make us go in one direction versus if the court did agree to stay the project, that might put some more horsepower behind the appeal.
Yeah, if the town decides not to appeal, the only action the town has left to it as a party would be to, in the DNM process, which is not insubstantial, but that's limited to the details of the approved plan. It doesn't get to the issue whether the plan should be approved or not.
So, you indicated we don't have to necessarily make a decision tonight, but to hit that 2-5 deadline, when would we need to reasonably make that decision?
At your next meeting.
Are there any other?
Theoretically, can they engage in site work now?
I don't think, no. They had not filed a DNM plan, so they have no basis.
So, no work can be done on that site at all?
I'll double-check with Jesse, but my belief is that without the DNM plan.
Digging, scraping, anything? Nothing?
Again, to use the zoning analogy, if you get your site plan approved, but you haven't met a condition of the site plan, you know, you can't go out there and start putting foundations in.
Right.
You get a building permit.
Just want to be clear.
The analogy is the same here. They would need a building permit to go out there and undertake portions of the work. Could they move dirt around the site? Anybody can move dirt around it, but they don't think they own the site yet, so, you know, they can do those things that a property owner can do without town approval.
Without town approval, right.
But they can't build the array without a DNM plan in place.
I just want to be clear for the public and everybody watching, you know, what can happen.
Okay. Are there any other questions? One thing I do want to say, we are likely going into executive session tonight, and that's something that we haven't done, you know, this board hasn't done for this project, and the previous board didn't do as well. It's not a decision that I take lightly, but when we're discussing legal options, I hope that the public understand that it's the responsible thing to do. So, I just wanted that to be there.
And it's the step that we recommend.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much. So, I want to move on to discussion item B, which is around historic tobacco agricultural structures. So, I wanted.
Please do.
Don't go too far. I just want to say, there's no, there's no decision that I'm looking for tonight. I'm looking just for a direction from this board. So, this discussion pertains to 45 Hoskins Road, which is about an eight-acre parcel of land that contains three historic structures that date back to the tobacco industry, including a dormitory. I think it's safe to say that they are in a decent amount of disrepair. The landowner applied for and received a demolition permit to tear those structures down. Members of the historic preservation community have reached out, and a couple of weeks ago, the town held a meeting with the landowner to discuss options for saving those structures. So, if nothing is done by the middle of February, they could be demolished. So, I want to do tonight is have a discussion with the board, basically get your opinion, guidance on some possible paths forward. What role does this board feel that it should be playing as it relates to historic preservation? And what's our feeling, or at least our direction at this point, as it relates to this particular parcel of land? at this point as it relates to this particular parcel of land? I first wanted to ask Marguerite to say a, a few words about the property and the, uh, the structures in question, just from a historical perspective. Do you mind just coming up and introducing yourself? And thank you so much for waiting until nine o'clock at night. This is, this is what happens when you, the board of selection doesn't meet for a month.
My name is Marguerite Cornell. I'm the vice chair of the Simsbury Historic District Commission. And I also want to mention that I have with me tonight also Julie Carmelik. Julie works for the Connecticut State Historic Preservation Office, and she is here to talk about, uh, the town's status as a certified local government, which I think will inform your discussion. But as to the historical significance of the buildings at the, at the property that, that Eric mentioned, they are, they are deemed eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. They are recommend, they are recognized in the town P O C D as structures that are worthy of preservation as well. They were also called out among other agricultural buildings in town in a two thousand and fourteen historic resources inventory done by architectural historian Rachel Carley. So it's not just our commission who's saying they're historic. There, there are numerous sources, including recognition by the, by the town itself. They're, they're important for a number of reasons. One is, as Elaine Lang mentioned, the association with Martin Luther King, which while we have not established a direct connection between this particular dormitory and these particular, the supervisor's house and the shed, they actually speak to a, a larger historical trend of migrant workers coming to work in tobacco in, in Connecticut. And we have a lot of buildings in town that belong to rich and powerful people. We have fewer houses and buildings that are what we would call vernacular, structures that are not particularly distinguished in terms of architectural character, but speak to broader trends of history. And those buildings tend to be less well-protected and are more vulnerable. And when we met with the, with the owner, the owner said, well, we own a number of, of these tobacco sheds in town, you know, we, we own a lot of them. We'd really like to open up a discussion for what needs to happen with all of these buildings. And as it happens, the company that I work for has done an inventory of a number of them. They've inventoried fourteen tobacco sheds on county and fire town roads, as well as the five sheds that are north on Hot Meadow Street. So we do have some sense of their historical significance and their condition. They're several years old, but it, but at least it is a starting point. So I, what I would like to leave you with is that, you know, we do have some responsibility, I feel, as a community, to these buildings, to the, to their history of, of the town. And if we don't protect some of them, we're going to lose them because they are fragile. They, most of them have been standing vacant for, for many years, possibly decades. And they are a character-defining feature of our town.
Okay, thank you. Before I frame the discussion, is there any questions for Marguerite?
Appreciate the information.
Yeah. So I wanted to broadly, basically, put out like three possible paths forward, and these are by no means exhaustive for discussion from the board. So one option, so I want to talk really about the acute situation because if, if nothing is done, there's a very good chance that these structures would be, you know, demolished in the next month, month and a half or so. So, so one option is that if this board feels that it is not our role or the town's role to play, we, we do nothing. Another option is that the town purchase that approximately eight-acre property, and, and it would be at a future date developed into something yet to be determined. And there's, you know, there's various, I mean, many, many options there, but it would involve the town purchasing that property. A, a third option is if the landowner were to agree to delay demolition, say for six months, a task force could be formed to develop a recommendation on what to do with the property and, and also possibly identify funding sources other than the town to come in. So I put these three out there. Is there anything that, that you would want to add that I...
Not that I would like to add, but I know Julie Carmelik has some things to say.
Please do.
If you don't mind, I'd like to ask very quickly.
Absolutely. Please introduce yourself.
I'm very prepared, but I am a, my name is Julie Carmelik. I am a resident of Simsbury. I also sit on the Historic District Commission, and I am a staff member of the Connecticut State Historic Preservation Office. So I just want to, very quickly, I don't know if, if you are aware or how familiar you are with the Certified Local Government Program, but in nineteen ninety-two, the town of Simsbury went through the process in order to become a certified local government. And basically, that is a partnership agreement between the National Park Service, the State Historic Preservation Office, and the municipality, where, whereby it allows the municipality an opportunity to have more of a say, a stronger role in what happens in the preservation of their, of, within their town. You can participate in the Section one oh six process, Section one oh six of the National Historic Preservation Act, if you had a, if you had a professional preservation advocate on, on staff. There are lots of things that you could do. It, it gives the community a greater voice in the preservation process on a federal and state level. But, but most importantly, it opens the door for a lot of funding. The Certified Local Government Program is funded by the National Park Service, and the State Historic Preservation Office gets a significant apportionment through the Historic Preservation Fund, in which we can allocate to certified local governments at a, on a non-matching basis. So if you applied for a grant, for example, if you were able to get a six-month stay and applied for a grant for feasibility study or a community, a community assessment, impact assessment, or something to that effect, there's money available for you. It's not, as I said, non-matching, up to twenty thousand dollars, and it's all part of the joy of being a certified local government. So whether you knew it or not, it's been several years since it's been designated, but that is available to you. And, and I would certainly, in this instance, recommend that you avail yourself of any available funding from our office. So if you have any questions about that, I'm happy to answer any questions. But there is lots of funding available, even for community engagement purposes. And, you know, Marguerite talked about the history of these resources, and certainly if you wanted to engage a series of, of talks, a series of educational workshops to raise awareness for the agricultural heritage of Simsbury, you know, that's all available to you. You know, it's really pretty endless, as long as it's around the discussion of Simsbury's historic character.
Thank you.
Sure.
Does anyone have any questions?
Uh, yeah. What, in your experience, would you see as the end result of that? I mean, say somehow, and I don't know how that process works, um, these properties could be preserved, and I'm not sure they can. They're really, I mean, demolition had started when it was, uh, so it's, they're in dire shape. But given all that, what are the options for what happens next?
Sure. So then there are other funding opportunities. There are, you know, depending on who takes possession of the property, you know, if it turns out that the town of Simsbury or the Historical Society or some nonprofit organization takes possession of the property for the purposes of salvaging and, and preserving their, the resource, sorry, salvaging wasn't the right word, but preserving the resource. There are grants available for that through our office, but also perhaps through some other granting agencies. But we have a Historic Restoration Fund grant, which is available for nonprofits and municipalities for the restoration of historic resources. If, if by any chance it falls into private ownership, again, we have tax credits that are also available for the rehabilitation of these properties, historic properties. So, so there, you know, once you kind of come up with a plan for what might work, what the community wants, you know, there are next steps. There are other funding sources that you can pursue for the purposes of restoration and rehabilitation.
Do they become open to the public if, if we do this? I mean, is there a...
Do the properties themselves? Well, um, you know, if you applied for a Historic Restoration Fund grant, for example, to rehabilitate the properties, they, it would come with an easement that would be administered by the Historic Preservation Office. And one of the stipulations of that easement is that they be available for viewing to the public, hopefully for educational purposes, to inform the community about the history and the resource itself. But, but, you know, that, you know, I think the requirement under the restriction is to, is to make it available twelve days a year. So if it turned out that it, you know, you're kind of in the process of developing a full-time plan, that's something that we could negotiate.
Thank you.
Yeah, Sean.
So how much are we talking about? So if we're going to buy this piece of property, I mean...
That's, that's a very fair question. So this is something that, that we did have a conversation about, and obviously, we don't know exactly. Do you feel comfortable providing an estimate of what that property could be obtained for?
It's not appropriate for the venue. I mean, I'll draw, but this...
Sure. No, it's a, I mean, we...
I, I don't have a, I did pull the assessor's card. I don't recall what the number was, but it was order of magnitude four hundred thousand dollars. I could be wrong. Forty-five Hoskins is the, the address I looked at. But in terms of the fair market value of the, of the property, um, I don't know. But I, we did have a meeting with Tim Lescolite from Griffin Development. It was held in this room. And, you know, I, my impression of the property owner is that they are open to alternatives, including they are very much in the business of selling land.
Yeah.
And would, would welcome an offer to purchase the land by the town. And I will remind you that the town has purchased other properties in the past. The Dewey Flower Farm comes to mind for preservation purposes. In that case, it was agricultural preservation, not preservation of the buildings. However, um, the, the town did allow the Dewey family to continue farming it as a flower farm, gave back a life estate to Mr. Dewey. There's also been other acquisitions of agricultural land by the town, either in form of an easement or outright purchase. So there is, there is a pattern over the last, call it fifteen years, of purchasing important assets. That's entirely a policy matter for you to discuss. But if you were to say, has the town ever done anything like this before? The answer is, well, in terms of agricultural preservation, yes. No, I, I think that one of the ways to look at this as a potential acquisition is cost avoidance by Griffin Development. It's going to be a pretty big price tag to demolish those buildings. You don't just go out with a backhoe and bulldozer and demolish the building. There's likely to be some remediation involved in the demolition, and that's a factor, you know.
So obviously, there's a lot more information we would need to make a decision, but directionally tonight, I'm interested in... Sean?
What's it zoned as? Do you know?
It's R forty.
Is it R forty?
R forty.
So presumably, this could be an attractive parcel for a developer?
It, it has some development challenges associated with it with regards to frontage, steep slopes, the southern portion, western portion. It looks like...
It's an acre, so it's...
It is an acre.
Can I just suggest that based on lessons learned from the purchase of the Hudson property, that maybe this board should refrain from discussing fair market value?
Yeah, I don't think that, I'm not prepared.
It's an assessor's card.
We can discuss the assessor's card.
Yeah.
What was the, um, you know, that, that property's interesting. I mean, I've, I've seen it for, you know, forty-seven years, driven by it, and, and I can remember when it was used. It was a dormitory. And now you drive by and it conjures more sort of nightmarish movies or something.
Yeah.
So it, I can imagine why that landowner wants to, to lose it because it's, it's creating no value for them. They approached, we, we found out this, was they approached you or you all found out about it and you approached?
They filed for permit to demolish the structures.
And seemingly that they were doing that to prepare the land for potential sale and attraction.
No, they were doing that because they, they actually received a notification from the building department that there had been a complaint regarding the condition of the property. And they said, well, kind of shrugged and say, well, okay, we'll take care of that. We'll tear it down.
So if, in, in the, if we move, again, discussion, move forward and you, and, and everything turns up roses through the fantastically efficient and quick grant process under the current budget that we have.
You haven't been here long.
Administration that we have at the national level, everything else. So then we have a, we have a, a building that we have to, to renovate and make safe and then make usable, right? And that's sort of, that's the end game with it?
A historic building.
Historic building. And have it be of educational value and citizen usage and such, right? That's what...
Well, correct me if I'm wrong. The study grant in and of itself would not compel the town to put a use restriction on land. It would be a property-specific grant to restore, renovate, whatever, that would come with an easement that would require some public access to the property. But I think the first step that was suggested was a study grant to determine the facts of the historical significance of the property.
Would we ever make, would we ever make a, um, a play a decision to buy the land for open space or engage that, um, organization to preserve the land, but be faced with the fact that renovating and operating those buildings after the fact is just not something that we can bear the cost of or interest of? Is that something we'd ever consider?
Another fact was pointed out to me by the town assessor is that when I asked for the card, he says, well, you know, you know, what's up or something like that. I said, well, you know, just looking at some alternatives, potential alternatives for this land. He says, oh, that's similar to the dormitory up in Terriffill that someone converted into housing. And I was not familiar with that, and that's a, the extent of my knowledge of it, but there does appear to be, um, another like property that was converted into some form of housing in Terriffill.
I, I wouldn't call it. It's less like than like.
Oh, is it?
It's, it's a whole couple of levels down, to be polite about it.
Because of the state of the building?
State of the building.
Yeah.
Chris?
First of all, the concept in particular of looking at tobacco barns to the degree that we can preserve those, I think, it's support that one thousand percent. Interestingly, I'm a person who always says, if we have an opportunity to buy land, we always should buy it because we'll never regret it down the road. But I have very strong cautions on this particular piece of property. And the reason is, the idea of preserving the dormitory is attractive because of, of the uniqueness of that. I just can't see an end result where we purchase this land, renovate it, have a viable use of it, that really justifies the cost. That's, A, I just don't have an end vision that's a really viable one for me. I'm not saying that there can't be one. The second is the timing of this worries me a lot because we're forced to do something that might be complicated very quickly. So that's my second hesitation. I'm receptive to a group of passionate people looking at it and studying it, but I do have to say, at the start of this, it's really hard for me to envision. Those, those properties are in disrepair. My understanding is there's certainly asbestos that's related to the dormitory. The dormitory up on Hoskins was actually burned down by the fire department. My understanding is it would not be burned down if it was ever asked to because of asbestos. I, so I have a lot of hesitation with this because of, I just don't see an, an end result that's viable and being pressed for time. I'm, I'm receptive to a group of people looking at it from a study point of view, but I really do have a lot of skepticism that we end up at a place that's really viable.
I, I'm, I am supportive in concept of the town, you know, spending, spending money to acquire, you know, strategically important properties with an end game. If we could, you know, sell that to the taxpayers to say, this is the vision. But at this point, what concerns me is that there, there is no clear vision or clear end game. Jane?
Eric, if I may, um, I think one of the subject matters before you tonight is you can't do much without the cooperation of the landowner. And what, some of the items before you tonight is you potentially have the opportunity to get upwards of twenty thousand dollars to look at the long-term viability of this property, whether it's acquisition, easements, or other purposes for the building or land. This may be an opportunity for you. This may be an opportunity for you. That $20,000 is available to you. My understanding of those funds is those funds are for utilization of studying the property. They're not tied to a future use of the property. It gives you an opportunity to use those funds to determine whether you should or shouldn't do anything with the property, whether the buildings can or can't be saved, whether, what the real historical value of them is. But it doesn't bind you to do something.
That's fair. But tell me if I'm thinking about this right. I mean, we've got to.
But you can't do it without the cooperation of the landowner.
Right. So we've got a ticking clock. So would a reasonable next step be to see if the landowner is willing to delay demolition, assuming the town is serious about applying for a grant to evaluate the structures?
To assist the town in determining what the future holds for that property from the municipal side, whether, I think it still allows you to walk away if the study doesn't come to some definitive conclusion with an end game to the final disposition of the property.
Marguerite?
It'll buy you some time.
Were you going to add something?
Yes, I was. I was present in that meeting with the property owner, and it sounded like they were potentially amenable to that. But they also tied it to a larger discussion about the various barns that they own on other properties, which really leads to a bigger issue, is, you know, what is the town's position on those?
Does the property owner have to participate in the grant application?
I don't believe to any.
They would obviously have to give permission for people to be on their property for certain purposes. But there's nothing else they would have?
Ultimately, they would need to be, it might be an active participant because whoever's undertaking the study is going to want access to the property and the building. So without their, two things, without their consent, they're not going to stay for six months on the demolition process. So again, I think Griffin has to be an active participant in working on the study, understanding the town is interested in the final disposition of the land, whether it's acquisition, easement, or just more information for the property owner. I think it, there may be some value in continuing that discussion with Griffin.
Mike, did you have a question?
I did. I am inclined to, assuming we can work out something with Griffin, to look at all potential, the potential use of this property. But I think the far bigger issue, and I think something that really gets to what I think is more of a big picture for Simsbury, is the existing tobacco barns, which are a huge part of our history. And, you know, very few of those tobacco barns, in fact, if my math is correct, there's only one of them that is actually on town property. All the rest of the tobacco barns are not on town property, and as a result, they could all be gone. And that would be a shame. You know, on the other hand, we have to be realistic, and they don't allow us to print up money for a reason, so we really don't have that option.
Yeah, but I think that actually leads nicely into the larger question of, you know, if there were to be a larger evaluation of the, you know, nearly two dozen, you know, historic barns, dormitories, et cetera, what's this board's role? What's the town's role? And I think that the way I'm looking at it, and just my opinion right now, is that I would love to see the project, any project, driven by either a nonprofit in the historic preservation community, or potentially a task force made up of members of the historic preservation community, with potential assistance from the town, but really, this is not a core competency of town staff, for example. So seeing the project driven by people with expertise would be something that would be important to me.
Well, I would endorse, as I've said before, a study looking at the larger issue of the barns, to me, I would be very supportive of. And I am receptive to a study of this particular property, but I do just, you know, want to reiterate, it's hard for me to envision anything happening, I mean, if we're going to purchase it, we're justifying it as preserving historical property. It's hard for me to see an end result that isn't us purchasing, spending an incredible amount of money to renovate if we can renovate, and then have a very difficult time with a really viable use of the, and meaningful use of the land going forward, except for having buildings that are preserved. So I just want people who are going to invest time in that to just understand, that's my starting point. I can be sold if something emerges from that, but I am saying that as a person who generally believes in buying property if we can. And I just, you know, that added with the fact that we're trying to do this with compressed time, you just need to know starting that I have those cautions.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, Dewey Flower Farm cost us 25 grand for the environmental remediation as a result of the toxic substances that were found in there after we finally took possession of the building, and that was just a small house, so.
The demolition funds alone are substantial.
Yeah. So I want to be conscious of the time. I feel like we've gotten the direction that I was looking for out of this conversation. Again, no decision needs to be made today, so I appreciate the conversation. I'd like to move on now to appointments and resignations. To have a motion to acknowledge with our thanks the resignation of Ronald Zappilli is a regular member of the Housing Authority effective December 31 of 2017.
I'd make that motion, and I'd just like to recognize Ron as a great chairman of the Housing Authority, and he did a lot of work and was responsible for a lot of the work on the Small Cities Grant applications, which resulted in a lot of grant money going to the Housing Authority for much-needed repairs, and we thank him for that.
Yeah, thank you for that. So Sean, did you?
I'll second that.
Okay, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and the motion passes unanimously. So item B, as part of the charter revision process, the new town charter calls for the Board of Selectmen to appoint three members of the public to the Open Space Committee, and I wanted to have a discussion about how to initiate that process. And I come to you with a proposal, which is that we would have the, we would ask the town committees, Republican and Democratic town committees, to each submit one name, and then ask anyone else interested to submit their, you know, letter of interest and/or resume to the town manager to ultimately be selected by the personnel subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen as that third member. And I'll just point out that there's been precedent for doing it this way, when we sort of have an odd number of people. So is there any thoughts or discussion around this?
Well, we do have a volunteer process through the town clerk's office. You can fill out a form online, say what you're interested in, and that gets distributed to the chairs of the parties and the relevant committees. So we might want to use the process that's in place until candidates emerge, at which point you could use the personnel subcommittee. I think that would open it up to more of the general public than just the town committees being responsible for that, and certainly it could be, you could use both, but to advertise it, so to speak, as open to people who would be interested in conservation and the Open Space Committee, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
So maybe I'm, we might be saying the same thing, I'm not 100% sure.
Well, I'm not sure you were saying, do you, like I said, we have a form you can fill out online that goes through the town clerk, and the town clerk sends it out to the two chairs and the commission. You know, usually get an email that says this person is interested in your committee, you know.
Right.
Sounds like you're adding more, you're adding the structure that Eric's.
Well, we already have this. No, we have the structure in place.
I'm really not looking to reinvent.
That's what I'm saying, is we already have that structure. So I would say, you know, maybe you want to put something on the town website and your report, whatever, and just open it up to say, we're looking for volunteers for the Open Space Committee, please go on the town website and use the volunteer form to apply.
Yeah.
You know, rather than make this more complicated than it has to be.
Yeah.
So then.
We just did.
Improve your idea, Eric.
So then people submit their interest, and we get one name from the Democratic Party and from the Republican?
Yeah, and Erica sends, she already does that. I mean, she sends it out.
Sure.
To the two town committees and the commission.
Sure. And Sean, that's something we could put out on news and announcements to get the word out? Certainly. And I was just double checking that you can, you're talking about for the unaffiliated position too, though, going through the same.
Yeah, it asks for your affiliation on the form, so, and then Erica just sends it out to.
Right. And in that case, the other.
That's how I've gotten, you know, other volunteers for.
I just want, is your intent, the third person would be an unaffiliated, that would be vetted by the personnel subcommittee, is that?
So I think to be more specific, the third person would definitely be vetted by the personnel subcommittee, but my bias would be to choose the most qualified person regardless of their party.
So you're putting, you're putting forth, let the two parties appoint somebody that they're familiar with, that has passion and interest, and that has expressed an interest, and then put it out to the public so that a person that doesn't have necessarily a voice through those two avenues could raise their hand.
So especially if you're watching this and you're unaffiliated, and that's your avenue.
Right, that's what you do.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for that direction.
Yeah, move forward.
Is that okay, Sean? I mean, that's, I mean, we've used that format before.
No, that's all I want to do, is follow what we've done and use the infrastructure we've got. Review of minutes, you have in your packet the minutes from the regular meeting December 11th of 2017. Any changes anyone would propose? Okay, then the minutes stand.
Or just like a note, that meeting adjourned at 7:25.
It was only one week before the previous meeting. Any liaisons, subcommittee reports?
Yes.
So help you God, nope.
Yes.
Cheryl?
Community for Care program on Wednesday, the day after tomorrow, January 10th, 6:30, Program Room 2 at the library, mental health issues and community issues regarding the LGBT community.
Thank you.
Period. I'm not going, I'm going to cut it short.
Okay.
Look on the website for more information.
Thanks, Cheryl. Anybody else? Okay, this is a point of order. Do we need to vote to go into, make a motion to go into executive session?
So I move to adjourn to executive session.
Any second?
Second.
And we bring Town Council.
Bringing.
Jamie, Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager with us.
Okay.
Who's getting the pizza?
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, the motion passes.
Yeah, we got to tell them we'll bring. I always forget that part.